How's everyone doing? Is it political? The expectations. It is six o'clock. We're gonna reconvene for a close session. Mr. Campbell's, any report of items from close session?
Thank you, we have no reportable access from close session.
Thank you. Dylan, do you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
All right. We're gonna move forward to proclamations. The first proclamation, Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program. Oh, there's a problem with presentations. First presentation will be the Coachella Immigrant Family Recovery Program update.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of City Council. Today, we have Mission Asset Fund providing their second quarter update. We'll have another update in October. Today, I'm going to let you friends again do and now go ahead and provide the presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions or he'll be able to answer any questions after the presentation. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. You give me one quick second. I'll go ahead and get set up here.
Welcome, Mr. Secondo.
Quick seconds. Let me just make sure I got this correct. Rates. And then are you able to see a presentation on your screen? Can I get a thumbs up?
Yes, you're good.
Yes.
Right, you can hear us? Can you hear us?
Awesome, cool. I'll go ahead and start. Good evening, everyone. My name is Afine Segundo. I'm the Financial Education and Engagement Manager at MAF, and I'll provide a quick program update on the Coachella Immigrant Families Recovery Program. I know all of you heard about MAF Mobilizing Engagement Director Joanna. She presented to y'all back in March at the committee meeting, but to ground this and to get an update today, I want to offer a quick reminder of what the partnership is all about. In the summer of twenty twenty-two, the city of Coachella and Mission Asset Fund, otherwise known as MAF, came together to support local families in the city of Coachella to rebuild their financial lives. Together, we launched a program with the goal of onboarding one hundred and forty local families, all of whom would be receiving four hundred dollars in a monthly distributions for up to twenty-four months. The idea was for participating families to be supported with financial services, including group financial education, one-on-one coaching, and opportunities for engagement with other participants. So now I want to go ahead and touch on program enrollment as it stands now that we are about to enter the second half of the year. So since then, we've received three hundred and ninety-one applications to the program showcasing a wide need for this type of support in the city. With the funding provided from the city of Coachella, MAF has been able to approve one hundred and forty families to participate within the program. Of the applications approved, I'm very happy to share that one hundred percent of the families are now successfully enrolled in the program and are receiving their four hundred dollars in monthly disbursements. That means that all of the funds provided by the city are going directly to families. So in fact, to date, we already, we have already dispersed two hundred and twenty-eight thousand and eight hundred dollars of the funds to the families, and we have seven hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars committed to be dispersed by February of twenty twenty-five. And though we are supporting families with the, that indicated what they need the most to rebuild their financial lives, which is cash, we know that alone, that's not enough. So we're engaging with these families in other ways as well. That's why we are offering financial coaching to give them individual, individualized coaching, one-on-one sessions as much as they like, so they can connect with somebody, they can ask the questions that they want, and they can connect, they can get connected to resources. We also have group financial education sessions. These are in different various forms, everything from chat las, which are essentially how to, I'm sorry, what is if somebody wants to know basics about credits, we also have workshops, what's called, if somebody wants to learn a specific skill. So if chat las are what is credit, that is our, how can I learn to read a credit report? And we also have community conversations in which people can join in, and they can go ahead and talk about their own experiences and learn from one another. And then we also have, we're really big on access. So we also have our mobile app called My Math, in which people can download the app completely free and learn about a wide variety of topics, no matter where they are in a financial journey. So we have a wide variety of offerings to engage with them further and hopefully be able to not only give them the money, the four hundred dollars a month, but also connect them to a little bit more as far as the financial education side to take them even further. So I have a unique position to share with y'all. I'm not Joanna, so I am the Financial Education Manager at MAF, so I'm very fortunate to work with an incredible team to work with, go ahead and putting on together these group financial education events and connect directly with clients from all over the nation, including clients from Coachella. So for what we've heard so far, with these funds, people are using the four hundred dollars a month for a wide variety of things. We've heard it, medical expenses. We know things come up, and maybe you might not have medical insurance or enough money put aside in order to go to the doctor, go to the dentist, take care of your bodies somehow. So we've know that people are using them for metal expenses. One of the biggest things we hear is rent. A lot of this money is acting as rent support. As y'all know, rising rent costs around the nation are definitely occurring. So rent is one of the biggest factors in which people are feeling unsure about their financial lives. So this money definitely comes in handy when it comes to their housing situation. Supplies. Now, supplies covers a wide array of things. It can be everything from household supplies. It could be business supplies. Maybe somebody has a side business in which you're trying to take off, so that four hundred dollars could serve as an opportunity for them to make more income. We've heard instances in which people have gone ahead and bought a vehicle because the payment for that vehicle was around four hundred dollars, and that is able to open up another revenue stream for them to try to make it somewhere else. And of course, supporting families. And this is one of the biggest ones because we know that sometimes the families have no choice but to support one another on a various variety of things. So we've definitely heard a lot of clients in supporting their families to make it to the next month. And that's it, y'all. So we're very rarely early on in this process, especially with the city of Coachella, considering we just started back in February dispersing the funds. We're a couple months in, but we're very excited to be learning more from the community every chance that we get. It's how they're using the funds and also not even how they're using the funds, but how they plan their outlook and how they're feeling most and foremost, because if they feel more financially confident, they have to know there's resources available. And one, if they feel supported by their city, which I'm sure they do, thanks to the measures that y'all took to partner up with us, then that has a whole lot more worth that can lead to better prosperity in the future. So thank you so much. That was my feature. If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Youngster colleagues, any questions? If, if I, thank you so much. Can you hear us? Just want to make sure you hear us?
There you go. I can hear you now.
Okay, good. If I, thank you so much for this presentation. It's very helpful for us to be aware and update the program. We did invest a good amount of money in this from our ARPA funding and to make sure that we're equitable and we serve communities that was left a notice during the COVID nineteen relief funds that we received from the federal government. And so we really appreciate it. I think it's, it's important in, in the current presentations, obviously, we'd love to continue receiving them on a quarterly basis. One thing that I, I, I think would be good too is how do we celebrate this more so folks, you know, community knows that this is happening. But China, I know we did some marketing about it, but I love for, for, for this to be, you know, be a little more known. And so, you know, I think I, I said, you know, suggest our staff and, and your team to talk about it, see, see, maybe, maybe doing a public, some, you know, social media or news article, having a family that's willing to maybe write an op-ed or something, putting it out that, you know, how's it successful from now that it started? We did some marketing when we first launched it, but now, months later, how is this happening, helping families, the report they give us today? But to, to put a report to the community, would, would be, would be great too.
Yeah, we, I would love to. We're definitely open to any sort of suggestions that y'all would have, especially within your communities, because you know your community much better than we do. And just to let you know as well, this is something that we're always actively trying to do, and we're trying to do now, especially since we are beginning to analyze the impacts of IFRP nationwide in different cities. So please, my director Joanna gets back on Tuesday, so I could definitely let her know about this notes. And if you have any suggestions from any of your team on how you would like this uplifted within your specific community, I'm sure we would be more than open to doing so.
Mayor, for them, we have discussed that. And so the idea was getting into these first few quarters. By the time we get into our third quarter, that'll be around October, that'll give the program enough time behind us to actually see what some of the results have been, and then also not necessarily providing update that happens in the middle of summer as well, where no one's really watching. So we want to be able to make sure we get the most thing out of the box. So we're looking to doing something similar to that, but what you're suggesting in the run up.
Good. Good, good, awesome. Thank you so much, Jacob. Thank you, Ifrain. Say hello to Mr. Quinones and the team out there. We really appreciate your leadership and your partnership. Any other council colleagues? No, thank you. Moving on to item number four, proclamation recognizing Karina Rodriguez for her service on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Council, can we join in front?
Can you join us, please? So I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. On behalf of the city of Coachella for Karina Rodriguez. Whereas Karina Rodriguez, a proud resident of Coachella, started her involvement with the city of Coachella in June twenty thirteen as a desert recreation district liaison for the Parks and Recreation Commission and began serving as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner on June twenty-one, twenty sixteen. And whereas Karina has demonstrated her passion for planning, collaborating, and advocating for recreational programs and services that best represented the interest of the Eastern Coachella Valley. And whereas throughout Karina's seven-year tenure as a commissioner, she has responded effectively to the complex social and economic concerns of residents wanting access to parks and recreation programs with the updates to the sport league memorandum of, of understanding, adoption of community field use and public field days, establishing the Parks and Recreation Foundation, and establishing the foundation scholarship program. And whereas Karina is, is always actively collaborating with other agencies to acquire funding such as the Anderson Foundation and further increase recreational programs in the Coachella, in Coachella by partnering with school districts and Imagine Schools in order to meet the challenges in a sustainable enterprise such as recreation and whereas Karina enjoys her career as the Community Services Supervisor for the Desert Recreation District, where she continues to champion for recreational equity for our community. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of Coachella, by the power vested in us, do hereby recognize Karina Rodriguez and urge all citizens of the city of Coachella to continue to support the Desert Recreation District. Congratulations.
Well, I, I never had the chance not to say a few words. Thank you for this. I, I am truly honored and I appreciate it, and it has been my pleasure to serve as a commissioner in this beautiful city of Coachella. I am born and raised in Coachella. I am excited of the progression the city has had. I am excited to be a part of it. So we will continue being a great city that we are. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Any council member wants to say a few words?
So I had the pleasure of serving with Karina. I think for maybe two years, it wasn't, didn't last very long. But Karina is very, very knowledgeable of many things that go on, what the recreations and as well as our leagues, we have a lot of recreational leagues and it's a lot of work, knowing not just how they operate, but their bylaws. And so I do thank you for all that you have done. I know that you've not only pushed recreation on the city side, but you've also pushed on the desert recreation side. So thank you for all the years of service that you've given us, and I hope that we're able to bring in more experienced commissioners as yourself. So thank you.
Again, you know, Karina is a great friend. We get a chance to work with her on Rotary. I, because of work, I haven't been to Rotary meetings, but you can find her at, you can, you can join, you can join Coachella Valley Rotary, where Karina has been our past president. They have lunch there at noon at Sloane's, and in there, she leads a, a, a group where we raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for scholarships and students for Coachella Valley. And, and you know, on top of the work that was mentioned here, you know, her, the resume and all of the work that he does for the community goes above and beyond. And so we thank you for your service in the city, and we know that's not going to stop here. I, I hope that looks good in your, in your office. And yeah, it's all, all right. Thank you so much. We have another. Is that the next one? All right. Yeah. Since we're up here, we'll move to the next proclamation. Number eight.
So the city of Coachella, California proclamation, whereas the month of June is celebrated throughout the United States and many other countries as Gay Pride Month, recognize, recognizing the dignity and rights of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus people. And whereas although local pride celebrations occur in November and in, in deference to the weather, you know, it's a hundred and ten degrees outside and we don't want to be outside. June is an appropriate time to join with others in celebrating the immeasurable impact, the cultural, civic, and economic success of our community that of our community that LGBT individuals have had. And whereas the city of Coachella is committed to honoring equal rights and diversity of all as outlined in its, in its resolution number twenty twenty dash forty-five on July twenty-second, twenty twenty, and whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had an miserable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country. And whereas education and awareness remain vital to end discrimination prejudice and enhance society's growing appreciation for LGBTQ rights. Now therefore, the mayor and city council by the power vested in us to hereby recognize Gay Pride Month and the city of Coachella hereby complain, proclaims the month of June is Gay Pride Month in the support of the LGBTQ community.
Thank you so much. This is amazing. Yeah, what's up? Thank you. Oh, my name is Sulema Garcia. My pronouns are she, her, and ea, and I work at the LGBTQ Center Coachella, which is right next door, and we work primarily with youth and provide resources for all queer youth.
I do just a quick, a few words is that since you guys opened up there, we've gotten a lot of support. And then also with students from Coachella Valley Unified School District, they now have a safe place where they can go and, and feel that they're supported and representative, represented. And so I do thank you, especially for that, more than anything else. Is that I know many of them go through challenges, and so your support has been extremely basically beneficial. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah, to echo the words of my, my colleagues, I, you know, very proud to celebrate and be supportive of the LGBT community. In Coachella, we want to make sure that this is a safe haven to, to our residents, regardless of sex, gender, or any form that we decide to identify or born. Because love is love, and we want to make sure that our students in Coachella Valley Unified School District have access to spaces where they feel safe, whether it's schools, whether it's here in the city or the community centers. And so I really appreciate the work that you all do. And, and we want to make sure that, that, that the residents know, and thank our council colleagues for bringing this forward too, and ensuring that we, in, in the month of June, we fly them the flag and, and, but every, every day of the year, we celebrate and make sure that we create ways that we protect our community and make sure that we allow people to be proud of who they are.
Well, my colleagues have said it all, but thank you so much for being here. I hope that we continue to support and provide that collaboration every single month, every day, not just, you know, obviously the month of June, but I hope that we're able to always be supportive to everyone and, and make everybody feel welcome because that's, that's what we think here in the city of Coachella. We want to make sure everybody feels welcome. So we hope to continue to collaborate and support. Thank you.
Today is June twenty eighth. Today is Stonewall Riots anniversary nineteen sixty-nine. So yeah, congrats. Thank you. Moving forward to item number five, this continuation of residential water service updates. Mr. Casalus.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the, members of the council. Just a quick update on some of our water policies specifically related to water shut offs for non-payment. I'll try to be brief. This is an update on a policy that, that you've already implemented as a council back in twenty twenty. But we haven't had the chance to implement it, and so we plan to roll it out and just, we thought it might be a good thing for you to hear what the policy is. Again, the utilities department and the finance department have historically worked together to implement our water shut off policies. And this is something that we've been doing for, for, for many, many years. These are normal practices of utilities. However, in twenty eighteen, the state legislature did pass a bill that aimed to add more protections to residents before you were able to shut them off for non-payment. And so as part of that new bill, basically the law said you, you need to implement these policies within your policies in order to start doing shut offs by the year twenty twenty. We brought this new policy to you, to the council back in twenty twenty. You adopted it, but we weren't able to roll it out because that same year, Governor Newsom actually passed an executive order that made, that prohibited the shut off of water service for residential customers for non-payment. And so that policy from the governor was, was in, was in effect for several years. And that, that moratorium has not been lifted. And so we're back to now being able to implement this policy that you adopted back in twenty twenty. In a nutshell, what the policy says is that you are not able to shut off residential customers for non-payment until they're at minimum sixty days delinquent. Per, per our policies, a customer's bill is considered delinquent on the twenty-sixth day from when the bill was mailed. So you can see there that the timeline is at the twenty-six days, it builds delinquent, and then we add sixty days in order to get to sixty days being delinquent and being able to shut off the service. The new requirements also require that we do a series of notifications to the customer prior to, to shutting off the service. And what that requires is that we send out a notice fifteen days prior to disconnecting the customer, letting the customer know that if they don't make payment, they will be shut off by that, by that date, the date is specified on the letter. They are also directed to the policies that advise them on what they could do to avoid disconnection, which includes entering into payment plans and a number of other options. And so so you send them the fifteen day notice, and then you send them another forty-eight hour notice. So we, we send them the fifteen day notice, then we send them a forty-eight, forty-eight hour notice, and if they don't fall within any of the policies, then you're able to disconnect the customer for non-payment. We, we are aiming to implement this policy immediately, which would put us to start disconnecting customers for non-payment on July eighteenth. That would require that by tomorrow, we put out the fifteen day notice. The fifteen day notices have already been printed, and our plan is to send out these notices tomorrow after we receive feedback from council. We calculate that, that by July eighteenth, we would have approximately five hundred and seventy accounts that would be eligible for disconnection. That is a total balance of about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. We, we calculate that between our operators out in the field and customer service that actually generates a lot of these notices and work orders for disconnections that we can do about a hundred and fifty per week. That we can do about a hundred and fifty per week. Uh, we are gonna, we are, our, our plan is to focus on the one hundred and fifty accounts that have the highest balances. And that would amount to about, uh, a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars of the a hundred and ninety four thousand, which, which is about seventy six percent. Of the amounts that are due. Uh, this, this would require us to put the forty eight hour notice out by July fourteenth in order to disconnect folks on July eighteenth. And then our plan is to repeat the process, uh, every other week until we catch up. And, and basically touch all the five hundred and seventy accounts that are eligible. And this would, we think would take about a, about a month to complete. And so that's, that's the update. Again, this is a policy. That council has already adopted, um, we just aim to start implementing it. And, uh, that's the reason for the update. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions from council?
So there's no, um. The one, yeah, well, if the. Just trying to make sure, say the, um, user goes in at the, say the notice that gets more and they go, is there, um, just trying to see the. Policy, the payment plan or anything like that they can set up or.
The, uh, the actual, the actual policy that was adopted was, was attached to the council item. Okay. Which is also on the agenda on the, on the internet.
Okay.
Um, and so you'll see that it's called, it's, uh, it's, it's titled discontinuation policy twenty twenty. Uh, it's in our website. The, the first notice that we sent out, uh, fifteen days, so the notice that would go out tomorrow. Uh, directs the customer to the policy. It, it, and then actually when we send out the forty eight hour notice. We give them until the, the very day before. So like, let's say that, let's say that July eighteenth falls on a Tuesday. The forty eight hour, the forty eight hour notice has. You have until Monday at five P M. To make payment. And then staff would then create the final list for disconnects by the end of, basically by six P M on Monday. And then that would be the list on Tuesday. Yeah. So there's constant notification. I think that was the intent of the, of the new bill. And so if, uh, you have no further questions, I think our, our planet. Both in finance and utilities is that we would start implementing this tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. Sorry. Absolutely. Really quickly for the, uh. I'm not sure if this would go to you, but when you go online to, um. There, so you go onto like the payment options and then you can enroll in auto pay. Is that, is that working well? That, that part, I ask personally, I've tried using it. And, um, I think I was having a hard time a couple of years back trying to enroll. I don't know if anybody has experience.
I, I, I know that we have a lot of folks that are involved in auto pay. I, I don't, uh, but. Customer service is always there to provide, and we have dedicated staff that. That are there to provide customer support, customer service, uh, that can walk anybody through the steps. But I know that that is an option.
Yeah, it is an option. Yeah. So the reason why I mentioned it is a couple of years back, I tried enrolling a few times that I would remember that I had this water bill. And, um, I would try, I would know really, I would go online and I'd say, okay, let me enroll in auto pay, but I would do it like. All the time and it would never happen. So I'm just wondering, hopefully that, that is working and that we know it's working.
I could, we could bring it up to staff. Yeah, we could bring it up to staff, but, uh. I think the general answer is that. It should be working.
It should be working. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to, uh, item number seven, office of the city manager presentation.
Uh, number six.
No, number six, twenty twenty three, Grito, Maritza.
Thank you, council. Good evening. I don't have a presentation, uh, PowerPoint, but I have a, um, just an update on the Grito event. Um, we, um, the council did approve in May, a cooperative agreement that was executed between. Cuna, Cuna de la Mundo, the Mexican consulate and the city for the delivery of the Grito event for this year. And in that agreement, we identified the event date to be September sixteenth. Recently, um, in, um, Cuna de la Mundo's approach of artists, they are finding some challenges in that date. Um, and we are proposing moving the date to the seventeenth. I am, um. Going to be, um, introducing Cuna de la Mundo, uh, staff to be able to provide you more information on that. And also to provide you any information on artists that they will be looking for, um, and to hear your feedback on. Proposing the move from the sixteenth, which is a Saturday, uh, to September seventeenth, which would be a Sunday. And if I can introduce the general sales manager, so that's Gonzalez, to give more information with regards to the artist selection and the proposed date change.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, as Maritza stated, um, my name's Celeste Gonzalez, general sales manager for the station. Also with me is Adolfo Inigas, who's the program director for Cuna FM, La Podre Rosana ninety six point seven. Um, and, uh, our efforts, really our partnership with the city is to help you put together the event, not only, um. Promote it to the community, uh, but also we hire the talent. And so in our, uh, discovery process, we've found that, uh, really there's no talent available. And so what we do as a small market, um, radio station is that we, we tend to pull artists from other markets that are, um, nearby. So Phoenix, Los Angeles, Samaritano Riverside, all those areas kind of passing through is how we really put together the event. And so we, we found some challenges there. We've never come to you with a date change. This is the first time and you know, it's because we feel that it's necessary. Um, we all, um, uh, I think for all of us, it's a benefit. It's a, it's a much higher benefit, you know, for our organizations to have it on a Saturday. Um, but because we see that, that we, we see the challenges that we have where, where you want to ask for the date change to Sunday. Do you guys have any, any specific questions?
Council.
Just add one thing. So I think the primary challenge that, um, the, the station has identified in their, um, discovery process is that the. Quality and the caliber of the talent that would be available, um, the sixteenth would be significantly lower and not as prominent and not as recognized by. Uh, the public as if we were able to move it to the seventeenth and that's why we work before you as well.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm okay with moving it, especially I think for the community, if you want to bring acts that will really draw. Um, the community out that they will really like to enjoy, because at the end of the day, it's for the community and what their enjoyment of the, the music.
Exactly. And so we, we take that responsibility seriously, you know, uh, being servants to the community. And so, uh, we feel that it's important to, to make that change.
Well, I, 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 I think it's a good idea to the, the sixteenth is the Mexican independence day itself. And so I know that, you know, people are, you know. We were even watching what's going on in Mexico too and, um. Why, uh, so, so we're looking at, 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 at Sunday, um, why, why not Friday?
Good question.
I, I'm, I'm open. I'm just saying why, you know, because I think, I think just less people work Saturday than they do. Sunday, Monday, and, and so it, it's just like, it's people stay up late, you know, and they're going to be. It's, you know, and so we don't want people to think like, oh man, my, you know, what's that is the law. And so I know, I, I think I'm, I'm open. Maybe today we tell you, look at Friday and we look at Sunday and then come back to us, see what was more available. Um, but I, I don't want to close you off on, on Sunday. If, if in case Friday is, is, is a better day. Um, you know, I, I'm not saying there's still people that work Saturday, as we know, our farm workers, you know, work, uh, Monday through Saturday and sometimes even. You know, seven days a week, um, but I do know that, that there is less people that work Saturday morning than, than there are people that work Monday morning. And so, um, and I want to make sure people know that they can stay up as, 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 as late as it goes without thinking, how long, you know, what time am I going to wake up tomorrow? Um, but, uh, what, I mean, are, are, are we in agreeance to do?
Uh, honestly, uh, the Friday might pose a challenge because it's a day festival. Um, uh, there's a lot of people that work throughout the day. They, you know, they, they get off in late, late afternoon usually. So that might pose a challenge, I think, uh, regards to regular attendance that we would get, you know, during a weekday, weekend event. Um, Sundays are known to be like Tardeada type of, uh, days as well, family day. So, um, you know, we, we, we really feel the Sunday would be the best. Um, also it's fair to point out that we, once we've, it's, it's really important for us to establish the date. Because once we do, then we can, we can do some more outreach. We want to reach out to Danny Luke's. Who's, you know, also, uh, like up and coming artist here out of D H S. So, um, you know, him and, and others, we, we kind of have pending, wait, really waiting on that, on the date.
But if you want Sunday and, and you're, you're the one putting it together, we're just here to, you know, we're not, you're, you're working and, and making. So if that's what you want, I think that's, that's, you know, I'm fine with that too.
I, I prefer Sunday just because Friday is a, is a. Another work week and it just brings a lot of challenges, but, um, so let us know if there's any challenges on, on Sunday of booking artists. Hopefully they'll be willing to perform Saturday and Sunday to come out to Coachella. But, um, let us know if you're still, um, getting some challenges for Sunday as well.
Okay. Do you have a tentative like list of artists already? Because I'm just wondering, since you are like, it's been a little bit of a challenge and it's in September, it's coming up. Just wondering if you do have like already some folks like just kind of waiting for, okay, yes, we can do it.
Yes. So I actually do have a list, um, and there, they all may or may not be available. It's just a list of artists that we know are going to be in and around the area, but not available on Saturday.
Okay.
Potentially the Sunday. Um, so we have Banda La Chacalosa. We know that Banda is one of the big drivers for this event. Um, Alegres de la Sierra, Mercedes Castro, La Septima Banda, Enigma Norteño, Banda Fortuna, Adriel Favela. Um, uh, Javier Rosas, Chiquis Rivera. To name a few. And then of course I just mentioned Danny looks that we want to do outreach for DHS. We feel that's a good driver.
Right. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Unless, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We got it. Uh, moving on. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, we look forward to having fun with our community and celebrating, uh, Mexican independence day, uh, here in Coachella. So the community knows, vamos celebrar el domingo. Uh, next, uh, city manager, uh, office of the city manager presentation.
After Mr. Mayor Proten, members of the council. The item before you was, uh, recommended, requested by account member, council members, and we wanted to give you an update on the revised office of the city manager. Uh, we did a little bit of reorganization last year, thanks to the support and, uh, and of the city council. Last year it was the city manager, that his office looked like this, it was the city manager. We had a deputy city clerk. Yeah. Economic development assistant to the city manager, grants, human resources. And public information officer, and also all of the right, all the departments were, uh, directors reported directly to the city manager as well. Uh, you know, we made some changes during this last fiscal year that we thought would be, make the organization a little bit more efficient and effective. Uh, for example, we broke off the, the economic development department. We made a whole department with our new director, Ms. Selena Jimenez. Uh, there she encompasses the grant, grants as well, along with small business development and any special projects that the council wishes to move forward. Uh, we also froze the city manager position due to, uh, uh, financial reasons and hopefully bring that back in the near future. Uh, right now currently that my department consists of the deputy city, our new deputy city clerk, Ms. Delia Renados. Our public information officer, R- R- Seth Laura, uh, Laura, and then our human department, human resource department, which is Sandy Maria and Yolanda. Uh, this is the, come, the, come of the responsibilities for the human resource department. They, they negotiate all the MOUs with bargaining units. They're the part of the recruitment, uh, recruitment hiring of new and, uh, new and retired positions that we have. They do the annual enrollment for benefits, which we all appreciate and love. And they also do any employee recognition events such as retirement parties, you know, uh, new recruit, new hiring and internships and stuff like that. Uh, they're, they're responsible for training staff and supervisors on all the following items, discrimination, sexual harassment, uh, defense driving. Performance evaluations, corrective actions, diversity and sufficient planning. And last year we did hire a new department assistant to, and once again, thank you to the city council, uh, that was Maria and we promoted Yolanda to management analyst. Uh, we did hire a new city clerk, once again, Ms. Delia, she's been awesome, uh, hip for running and she's plans to move, uh, new policies, procedures with our, uh. That, uh, division to make it more efficient. Uh, the public, uh, information officer is responsible for the branding and communication of city. Uh, and they've been here for about seventeen months. They focus on branding, websites, social media, event, event promotions, marketing, advertisement. For, uh, public relations and any written or visual communications and some community engagement as well. Uh, we've did a lot of branding, uh. Things during this past year, we developed a brand standard guide that kind of helps us, you know, but do our. Logo, we've done, you know, special events such as the other mortos, we compared our logo to the other mortos. We did one for during the holidays with the gingerbread man, uh, and we have, uh, much more that we want to kind of utilize with that branding. We've done a wave, she, she helped revise the way finding signings that we did right there during the urban green project. Uh, we've done, uh, we've participated in the Palm Desert Golf Car Parade and won our first year, we won the director's trophy. And increased exposure to the city. We've, uh, you know, we've done a new, unique and promotional items that we've given away to the community during our events. So that, that's been very popular and those are examples. People keep asking me for those hats. So we may have come back and do maybe online retail store eventually to get our merchandise out there. Marketing, you know, we did, uh, went to ICSC, there we did the whole thing. This was our new booth. It was very eye catching. A lot of people would come to us and ask us what, what Coachella is. Uh, you know, it's more than just the music festivals, uh, and we showed them a little bit what we were and all the possible opportunities out there for, uh, developers and new retailers. We started a new campaign called Puro Pasión that will be coming out soon and, you know, below is kind of the mariachis in front of the area. Uh, we've addressed requests from directors for communications, have increased, uh, press releases. Uh, you know, managing any public relation efforts and, uh, you know, working with our local media outlets to, when we do groundbreaking to urban communities. We've also increased our visual, uh, visual running communications and engagements. We've, uh, done our newsletter called Nuestra Voz. It's a bi, quarterly bilingual digital newsletter. Uh, we've, uh, tried to put in new tactics to, and some device community engagements, you know, by providing giveaways or food to when we do these events to get people's, uh, community feedback for. Projects and programs that we have, uh, we've worked with the local partners to create, uh, different, uh. Incentives that would help, uh, you know, bring more people into our engagements and we have a lot more engagements that we have planned in the near future. Social media, this was the biggest impact, I think, uh, you know, we average about five posts a week. Social, uh, Facebook increased by a hundred and seventy seven percent since we had our P I O, Instagram has doubled, LinkedIn has tripled. Uh, and we're looking at, that talks about TikTok. So we're, we'll see what our new internal will help us do that and bring us to, to the modern and capture our youth. Uh, we've all started our YouTube channel and we plan to do some programming for that to increase, uh, subscriptions. Our website was a big one and we know we need to make some upgrades and modifications. We installed Google Analytics. So we'll be able to determine which sites were paid, which pages, uh, the residents look at the most and which ones we need to improve on. We, uh, created a new events page that's going to kind of highlight the, the events that we have going on for residents and visitors. And we work, you know, we're trying to work with, uh, different directors to do special projects that we try to incorporate in the city. You know, some of the milestones that we've accomplished, uh, you know, promoting events on social media, you know, when I first saw the, uh, city of Coachella commercial on YouTube. I was shocked. That was, it's pretty awesome. Never seen that before. So that was pretty awesome to see that, uh, you know, working with our brand. We have a very attractive brand that's fun and engaging. People love it. Uh, you know, that's why we want to try, see what we can do to bring more merchandise forward and. Spread the, the word of Coachella and, you know, we're looking at strategic, uh, ways to utilize our budget and get more, uh, more bang for less. And these kind of, kind of things that we've done in the past examples. And some of the projects that we have moving forward, we started a new summer, uh, like I said, we were get pre-created with our, our logo. We, we're launching our summer themed state Coachella. And these hats will be given out at, uh, the upcoming event, the Fourth of July event. Uh, they are planning, uh, P I O is planning the twenty twenty three state of the city event. Working with, uh, the economic development department to do some mini videos that promote small business. Keep moving forward with our Puro Pasión, uh, advertisement campaign. We have our, we're doing some cool giveaways for the Bagnuma basketball court ribbon cutting project, which also includes tenant, a tennis court and pickleball. On July fourteenth, then we're going to have a lot of cool giveaways, uh, there, uh, along with, uh, a team that's going to show us how to play pickleball. So if the community wants. Uh, along with a, a team that's going to show us how to play pickleball. So if the community wants to come out and play pickleball, we, you know, we recommend it. Let's see, we'll provide rackets and balls. And visors too, we're trying to be back visors. Uh, and then uh, one creative thing that we're trying to do with the fiscal budget is uh, create a little video, like a two, three minute video that kind of breaks down our budget. To the residents, instead of them reading a three hundred page document, you know, they kind of realize what the city budget is. Our expenses, our expenditures, our fund balance and two, three minutes so they can understand that and be ready, you know, have any, they have any questions, we can definitely ask. Answer them and we're starting to do a, a text subscription, right? Where people, we was in our messages via text to our residents if they sign up. For any things that happen like road closures, broken uh, water lines or special events that we have. And you know, there's more to come. We know we want to find more things. We want to be uh, creative, interactive and uh. You know, that's why, you know, one of the reasons for this presentation is to also ask council to see what they want to see from uh, this new uh, my department. And these divisions to see what we're missing, what we can do, what we can bring forward. So during this time, I would like to open it up for any question, comments or direction.
Uh, council, any uh, comments, questions?
So um, Gabriel, thank you for the presentation. It does provide a lot for us. Um, the reason I was asking as far as, you know, what we're doing for public information is because I get a lot. Um, of questions from our residents specifically when it comes to like the web pages. Or the process for many different, you know, where it's application and. And rightfully so, you know, whether it's trying to get services or whether it's trying to, um, as council member Virgin had said, you know, to get them a payment plan. Um, so that's obviously my responsibility to, you know, inform you so that that way this stuff can be added. I know lots of this stuff is kind of easily added. It's not, it doesn't take a lot. But unless we're having these conversations, well, you know, staff just wouldn't know what the community is asking for. I do appreciate that um, the text messaging is being added. I know this is some stuff that we. Um, that council and, you know, including um, council member Jacinto had asked for. So I'm happy to see that many of these ways or different ways of communicating with our residents is coming through. Um, lots of times things that go through or that we receive in the mail, you know, we're just not reading anymore. I don't read it. I just doesn't address. I really do all my um, bills and everything. I do it online. And so I'm glad to, to see that that's happening. Um, and I also noticed that the business page is also being updated. And so that makes me very happy, especially for the business community, because that's something that they were constantly on me on as well as it's how do I do that? And so I can start directing them to some of these pages. Um, I would say that for, for our website, I do think it needs to be updated a bit more. Uh, it's still not very user friendly and I noticed that there's some information that's dated and I know it's just easily fixed. But like the um, I think it's the parks and recreation. It still has, you know, the former commissioners on there and. Um, I think for the planning commission, I don't think it shows like the, who appointed them and their term, you know. Just things like that, that again can be, you know, updated very easily. Um, so, but I would like to see some of those. Changes and um, I know the directors, um, they have a lot of, you know, stuff that perhaps can be very useful. When it comes to communicating that with our residents, um, whether it was the rebate or the um, uh, the lawns. Yeah, it's just things like that, that are not easy or easily accessible. Um, and maybe we can start promoting that on the social media. I will say as well is that, um, I agree with you. The social media aspect has, is just much better than it was. Before, it really, it really is. And the branding, I think that recess has done an outstanding job as far as. You know, what we're putting out there and making sure that we have the City of Coachella logo everywhere. That she's done a phenomenal job and I think her background is marketing and so that clearly is, I mean, that is her strength. I just want to make sure that we remember that it's not just marketing, but also communication. And so that's what I ask that you guys to keep in mind is that we're also communicating. Uh, things that make our residents' lives just a tiny bit easier.
It's a good recommendation. We'll see what we can do to move some of that forward and, you know, spruce up our website and improve those communication lines.
How mobile font friendly is the website? I don't think it's that mobile friendly.
No, that's one of the things we're going to look at as well.
Yeah, you know, I agree. The website, I think when, when it's easier, because I went on here, this, I'm going to go back to the water pay utility bill. Cause it is on there, it, it's on there and then I click it and it just sends me to this like service directory list. That, that would send me to like, where do I set up my payment? Right? So, so just I think uh, the hierarchy of the website, just how to make sure we prevent that piece, because then it's easier for the, the user end piece. And then, you know, that, that human interaction that goes with it, um, so that we can make sure that. You know, if I go on there on my phone and then, you know, I go and pay my water bill in person and someone at the, at the, at the city says, hey, by the way, you can pay this online. And then you just click, click and go and you set it up right on your phone and then that way they can set it and forget it, right? Like the nineties commercial with that white thing that you just put your chicken inside. Um, so that's a random joke that I wanted to make there for you all, um, but that way it's easier, right? I think the website really needs that. Um, I think in, in the big sense and, and I have seen the social media, I think it gets a lot of traction and that's been really, really key. I think and then that's how we get more people to come to our meeting, right? So, and our events too, so.
Good feedback. Thank you. Definitely look at the website and make some upgrades.
Good job, Gabriel. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, just one thing for me, now that we're on social media, um, I think it'd be very helpful if. I know that when we're going to have a, a council meeting, um, we do a really good job at getting the agenda posted on social media, you know, ahead of time. But maybe consider also just doing like a post that announces that there will be a council meeting, something a little bit shorter. Um, so that folks don't have to like keep scrolling, like what is this? What am I looking at? So like a little announcement, like council meeting this day, this time, the address. And then add the attached like agenda, they want to take a look at that as well, but. Kind of like an announcement. That way when you are looking at the profile, I'm thinking of it in, in like Instagram way. If they go to our, um, if they go to our profile, they get to click and see directly right away, like, oh, there's a council meeting this day. They're not looking at a bunch, like just kind of everything. We're used to it, but I mean, like for trying to be more inviting to folks and stuff. And he can get a little easier to kind of look at.
Oh, definitely. We'll, we'll definitely do that moving forward.
Thank you. You know what, Gabriel? I subscribe to our newsletter to get updates. I haven't gotten anything, so I've done it like three or four times. I thought maybe I just didn't do it correctly. You just add your email address, I think, in the, in the first page. And so, yeah, it probably needs to get.
Yeah, I'll get to that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Gabriel.
Right, thank you for your direction.
Yeah. Moving on to uh, item number nine, Rosehead Laughco Alternative Governance and Electricity Service Study, IID.
This item will be presented by BBK, Mr. Ryan. If we can promote him.
Yeah, and Ryan is a partner in our firm, one of my partners. He works on energy of items, has been working with the city. Um, for a couple of years now on energy related items, so, um, join us via Zoom. And he also has a PowerPoint that, um, he'll be sharing once he introduces the item.
Hi, good evening, council members. Gabe, Carlos, um, let me share my screen. All right, can you hear me and see me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening. I'm Ryan Baron. I'm a partner of BBK. I've been working with the city. Um, on its energy matters for a few years now and I wanted to, um, we wanted to present. Um, an update on a study that's being done jointly by the Riverside and Imperial County Laughco's. On alternative governance and electricity services uh, in the Coachella Valley. Um, uh, namely around the Imperial Irrigation District Service, uh, he- here in the valley. Um, just to give you some context, uh, the city has been um, analyzing the expansion of IAD service for a couple of years now. And alternatives to it as well. Um, there are some areas within the city, particularly the economic development zones that are in need of additional power. In order to bring in a new commercial and industrial development, quite a bit of power, actually, uh, maybe one or even two substations. Uh, as well as new development uh, in the city, um, that um, uh, needs additional power. Though this is a common theme around the Coachella Valley. In fact, we're assisting a few of your uh, surrounding neighbors with these same issues. Um, you're seeing it in Indio, you're seeing it in Palm Desert, uh, La Quinta. Uh, Desert Hot Springs where there's new development plan, but there isn't enough energy or infrastructure to serve those, those areas. Um, and so in two thousand nineteen, your council actually approved formation of a municipal utility here in Coachella. Um, as sort of a baby step or first step and directed the city manager's office to work on an implementation pathway. Uh, to provide an alternative to IID. Um, so IID is essentially an irrigation district. It provides water to Imperial County. That's where its service and territorial boundary is. However, due to a couple of things I'll get to in a, a couple of slides from now, it does provide electricity service outside of its service area to the eastern Coachella Valley. And so one of the big questions has been, what are some of the alternatives that, uh, to IID? And one of the big complaints has been that there's been no representation from the Coachella Valley stakeholders on the IID board. Where over sixty percent of the electricity revenues uh, are derived from Coachella Valley that go to IID directly. Uh, and I'll get into a little bit of those concerns in a second. Uh, and because of those representation concerns, there was a bill in two thousand twenty-one. An earlier version that I helped draft, uh, the May's bill that called for a study. Uh, though that was vetoed, but the study still got put in the legislative budget and so the joint Laughco's have money. To look at a study on what the various government op, governance options are. And so the main question for the study that we're going to talk about tonight is what options the stakeholders in the Coachella Valley have for electricity? And it looks at several of those options, which I'll get into uh, uh, in a sec. So the study essentially looks at the history of electricity service. It identifies the relevant stakeholders in the Coachella Valley who's getting electricity, what their concerns are and what their issues are. And it looks at current and alternative governance models, both staying with IID. And if the valley were, or IID would pull out of electricity service. It doesn't though identify what the specific needs are in the area, what, how much the infrastructure would be, what improvements are needed. Uh, it mentions the sixty-one percent of revenue going to IID from the valley. But doesn't really get into what that budget is or what that financial information is. And it does not assess the technical, legal or economic feasibility of any of the proposed alternatives, which is a necessary step for any community can. Decide which way i- it, it wants to go. It, it is a very useful study in the sense that it provides governance options. But I just wanted you to let you know what, what it is looking at and what it's not looking at. So this is a map of the, the service area. The reddish brown area is IID service territory in the Coachella Valley. In the bottom right, you'll see its entire service area, including Imperial County, a sliver of San Diego County, and then, you know, Eastern Riverside County. As well as the cities that are served by IID, uh, Colaquinta, Indio, Coachella, Desert Hot Springs. And then slivers of Palm Desert and Indian Wells, and then also the territory of the Coachella Valley Water District, which is important. Because it's subject to an agreement I'm going to talk about here in a, a slide or two. These are the stakeholders that have been interviewed in the study and are, are receiving electricity service. Uh, the cities that are in IID service territory, uh, the tribal nations that are receiving uh, electricity. As well as the unincorporated uh, communities as well. So the study has a pretty good high level history of how IID came to be. And this is something that we've looked at and worked with the city manager's office on. Uh, and there's a nineteen thirty-four agreement in place, which was a compromise settlement agreement between IID. And the Coachella Valley Water District over water rights and it settled a longstanding dispute over to who would have first rights. To water from the All American Canal that was built to connect from the Colorado River to Imperial County. That provides water to the Imperial County and then parts of uh, Coachella. Uh, this was a ninety-nine year agreement, uh, as part of the settlement of these water rights. Um, uh, IID was given a ninety-nine year lease of all the electricity and power rights on that canal. Where it owns or operates four or five hydroelectric plants that generate a lot of the electricity for the two valleys or the county in the valley. And then um, uh, in exchange for settling some of those rights, IID agreed to pay. Uh, CVWD like about an eight percent royalty or percentage of electricity sales from Coachella Valley. Uh, and this agreement expires in twenty thirty-three, which is ten years away, but um, not that far off. So there's a lot of uh, studies and examinations going on as to whether that agreement should be extended. And what the effect of terminating it would be or modifying it or extending it and the continuation of IID in the valley. But really how IID came to be is it acquired an old power company in the nineteen forties, which was approved by the Public Utilities Commission. Uh, and that company was providing service in the Coachella Valley and so that's really um, one, the other way it came to provide power. There are no other franchise rights like you would have with Southern California Edison and cities. Um, but IID purchased an old utility which was approved by the PUC. So some of the concerns that have been raised by the stakeholders in the study through interviews have been the lack of representation on the IID board. Local control, particularly a desire to have money for energy programs within the cities. That some of the transmission capacity is limited, which has hindered some of the economic development. The facilities are older. Uh, uh, there's been power outages, a lack of maintenance. There's a concern that a lot of investment will need to be going into the system, which will raise uh, the rates, which have been historically lower. Than other utilities like Southern California Edison. And that there will be a lot of funding needed from the cities for these capital improvements. And in fact, we're already seeing a lot of these discussions happen, particularly in Indio. Who just agreed to form a, a financing JPA with uh, IID to help fund a, a few substations there. So the study looks at basically two models. IID continues to serve and what are the different ways IID can do that? And if IID is out of the retail or the electricity business in Coachella Valley and what are the options there? So there's about four options with IID involved. One is as is, and there's a list of bullet points under each of these options about the, the pros. The cons and some of the issues to think about. And I'm just going to highlight a few of the big ticket items for this. Uh, one, there would be, still be no representation of the Coachella Valley on the IID board. The Coachella Valley Energy Commission, which was created as um, sort of a compromised representation would continue to serve. Only as an advisory body, would not have any other authority. Uh, cities would still need to finance improvements with IID. However, it would eliminate some of the financing and startup costs if the Coachella Valley were to form their own public agencies and try to provide alternative service. Another option that has been proposed in the study, which has also been proposed in the past. Is for IID to annex the Coachella Valley, which would require a Laughco approval. And that would give I, uh, board representation. So each of the cities would, uh, there would be elections held in the Coachella Valley to the IID board. This would probably require some sort of legislation, because IID has made clear that it's not going to allow Coachella Valley uh, representation. On uh, water rights specific to Imperial County. Um, it would likely terminate or modify the compromise agreement. Uh, however, uh, it would eliminate some of the financing and public agency costs, because IID would still manage and control the system. Uh, another option for IID service is to create a new sub-board of directors. Where there would be a, a new electrical service boundary created. There would be a sub-board under the IID board that would allow for representation. Uh, but there would still be some of the same management and ownership issues there as well. And then lastly, uh, the study identifies uh, an option for a joint powers authority, which is one that I think India's been pursuing. That wouldn't require any reorganization or legislation, but there would be no change to IID governance. The parties would have flexibility in designing their contract to their JPA and what it's going to govern exactly. Uh, IID would continue to own and manage the system and the financing of improvements would go through that JPA. Um, so option two is IID not in the picture. And the first option proposed in the study is to basically sell IID assets to another utility. The likely uh, utility here would be Southern Cal. The likely uh, utility here would be Southern California Edison. The study rightfully says that will need C P U C approval that then uh, instead of representation on the I I D board, you know, representation would be through five P U C commissioners appointed by the governor. So no local control and the P U C would approve the rates in terms of service. Um, and the study also says this was a potential to form a community choice aggregator, which I'll get to in a couple of slides. The next option, uh, 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 actually two options, I quarter combined them here for sake of this presentation, is to form another public agency like a public utilities district or a special district where a bunch of cities or county get together and then provide that electricity across a larger geographic area. You see this in Sacramento with S M U D, the Sacramento Municipal Utilities District. Uh, special elections would still be needed to form the district with approval by the board supervisors. Uh, there may still need to be LAFCO approvals. There would be startup costs and financing needed. Um, the study looks at uh, the district potentially providing uh, what type of uh, part of the energy uh, generation, distribution or transmission, and that could be done in a few different ways. And then what effects that would have on C V W D's uh, area and water rights. But the study's really not clear on what it's analyzing here. Um, so we are going to suggest that there's going to be uh, more analysis needed on this option. And then lastly, the study looks at uh, community choice aggregation. And C C A is basically where a city or a J P A provides just the retail arm. It goes out and buys electricity. It doesn't own the poles and wires and distribution and transmission, but it schedules that. Uh, and then it provides the billing and collections and charges the customers for those. And, and you have one here in the valley. It's Desert Community Energy and, and full disclosure, I, I work a lot with them. Uh, the study says that S C E would need to take over I I D service for that to happen. I, I'm not sure that's the case, and that's a constructive comment that we want to make. Um, but there, there will be no changes to the I I D board, but the valley would have control over the retail side, but just not the transmission and distribution, which would still be provided by I I D or if the assets were sold by S C E or another utility. So some of the comments we want to suggest uh, the city make in a letter. Uh, comment letters are due on August thirty-first. The LAFCOs have extended that deadline um, by two months, so there's still plenty of time to make comment. Uh, there's a great history of I I D, the stakeholder interest and the issues of concern. It's very high level information. However, um, in light of one of the key options Coachella's been looking at, there really is no mention of municipalization or forming a municipal utility, uh, which we think the study lacks. And we've heard comments from other uh, development stakeholders that that now, that analysis is also missing from the study. There's also no financial or economic data that would assist in determining feasibility. And um, LAFCOs have made clear that that's not the goal of the study. However, we do think that if someone has been a part of a lot of feasibility studies, uh, uh, both in the state and out of state, looking at the technical and economic and financial data is very important under each option in order to ensure, you know, the best choice of what it is that stakeholder needs and wants and how much those capital costs are going to be, how much improvements are needed. In fact, at the last uh, C V E C meeting, the consultant said they did request this information from I I D, but they declined to give it, which I find strange because, you know, financial information is generally public record. And if uh, the valley is sixty-one percent or more of those sales, you know, some of that information should be put into the study, even though you can look at that in later phases, uh, and should look at that in later phases before making a decision. Um, another comment is that the annexation of the Coachella Valley and the creation of a sub-board have been analyzed and that's been rejected by I I D, which led to the maze bill. Um, so while I think it's prudent to, to mention it in the study, I think there's a history there um, on that issue. Uh, we also think that under the J P A discussion, we could have a little bit more analysis as to what a J P A is proposed to do exactly. A J P A cannot provide electricity in and of itself and needs some other statutory authority um, there. So um, we, we think that Indio is one example that's going on, but the study could probably elaborate on that a little more. Uh, another few constructive comments, you know, a sale to another utility would need a willing buyer and seller. Um, you know, uh, C C A, we think that there's some more analysis that's needed there. Um, and uh, um, you know, I, I think the key, the key is on this slide here, and that's uh, we need, the, the study should clarify that the technical and feasibility needs to still be studied. So the Coachella Valley can make a proper decision. The governance options need some more legal analysis. And um, you know, portions of the study probably need uh, more uh, understanding of California energy and energy markets so that um, the elected officials and the public and the stakeholders can, can really make an informed decision. And, you know, it's our proposal to the city that we, we shore up some of those holes and um, and do that. So I know I've given you a lot of information in the ten fifteen minute period of time. And I'm happy to answer any questions or, or turn it over to, to, to the city manager for more comments.
The purpose of the, the presentation was to kind of, you know, summarize what Ryan said. Uh, we know he mentioned the comments that we're going to submit in a letter, but we wanted to make sure council was able to provide comments that we didn't capture, things they want us to elaborate. So uh, we plan to submit a letter with all those comments. And if, if, if there's any additional comments you would like us to add to that letter, please let us know.
Mr. City Manager, can you make sure that this presentation is emailed to us?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
And then uh, just give us some more time to, to look it over. I'll email you. Um, any um, further comments I may think of, I think it's a lot to take on and want to study a little more.
Bill, I know that you attended that energy meeting. Uh, can you just give us a, like a recap, a recap really quickly while we're on the topic, so? Um, you know, there was like a
There, there was discussion from the, the, the people who were there that put together the study. There was just a, a vetting of that. They, they came back letting them know the options that they have for giving feedback. There was discussion also about the Indio proposal on the J P A and how they're going to have a surcharge. Um, there are still many, many legal questions about that because um, you have to, we've had discussions in the past with I I D and we basically kind of throughout the same thing that Indio has, except we would purchase power and own those substations. And I I D was against that. They, they wouldn't move forward with it. Um, at this point, they're talking about Indio or actually the bondholders, because they have to go out and bond for this. Um, the bondholders would own the asset for thirty years until the bonds were retired. However, there's a surcharge that would be put on the backs of the rate pairs within Indio. Um, there's a question as to whether or not when you purchase a home, you pay, you know, just like you pay development impact fees for city services, whether it's uh, facilities, streets, um, parks. We pay a development impact fee. Well, when somebody connected I I D, they paid that fee. Typically, homes are more energy efficient than they were back when they were first built, yet they're stating that, you know, there's more energy uses within homes. I suppose that could be the case because perhaps there are more people living in homes now. However, the, the ability by law to charge somebody for something they've already paid for, I believe, would be challenged. We'll see if that happens or not. Um, that's something that will come up in a future meeting. I think we have another meeting on the uh, eleventh of July is what it's been moved to. There's also question two, ultimately what happens? In twenty thirty-three, you know, there's, they put out um, at the last meeting, I wasn't appointed before this last meeting, but I did watch the, I guess there's over a billion dollars worth of infrastructure that's needed in the valley. Um, you know, I I D cannot go out and do that because they have not been able to do anything north of the county line since two thousand three, because they couldn't issue bonds on something that they didn't know whether or not they were going to be controlling. So last time they issued bonds and did actually any major infrastructure improvements in the valley was based upon two thousand three bonds that were actually spent in two thousand six through, I think it was twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, where they put in the substations out on, I believe, Jackson. And then there was another one um, in transmission upgrades in La Quinta as well. Um. We're going to have to figure out if they're going to charge and see what Indio does. What happens if I I D does not continue after twenty thirty-three? These funds are being collected. They're going to be put aside. Who's going to hold those funds and ultimately who's going to be responsible for repayment of those funds if I I D is no longer serving the valley? I think that's going to be a big question. It's going to leave a lot of risk on the table for anybody who possibly would want to buy those bonds. I, I, you're going to either pay a premium because there's greater risk or they just won't be able to do it. So those are things that will be coming up at the Energy Commission meetings. Um, but we also need to talk about ultimately what the city's going to do. There's a plan to come back to the council. Um, we will have discussions with you about what we've been through. I know we have a couple of new council members here, so you don't know the entire history of what we've been doing, trying to create our own utility to service our, our economic development zones. But um, there's, there's been a lot of work. We've already been down this road with I I D. I, I know there's been a change on the board. There's possibly the ability to talk to them again about purchasing power. We'll see what happens with that. But um, at this point, we've been, you know, back when I was here and I was the city manager, we were talking about this back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So this, you know, just like Ryan had said, it's ten years out. You know, we got a lot of time. We've already spent seven years talking about this and nothing's happened. So it worries me. And, you know, people say something that keeps you up at night as a council, as a member, you know, of, of staff in the past and present. Um, it concerns me because ultimately we need to figure this out because we have not been served the way we need to. And I know that when the city manager is out and trying to get businesses to come into the city, the first question is, what about power? We don't have an answer for power right now because there's no investment that's happening. And we're not going to pay for something that we have to turn over to I I D, not knowing whether or not they're going to be here in ten years. So we need to figure this out sooner rather than later, and, and we'll be doing that with the council over the next month. Um, coming up with a plan in this LAFCO um, report and going to the legislature will help us figure out that path. Um, I'm hoping that I I D is more receptive to the ideas that we've put out in the past as, you know, as, as they were before. Hopefully they, they, they see it in a new light, seeing as how we're moving the uh, closer to the end, uh, the end zone here. Or even though it's ten years, we are running out of time. So I hope that kind of gives you an idea as to what's going on.
Bill, just a quick question. So, I mean, the study's been out for some time now. Have we received any feedback from any board members from I I D? Do we know what they're going to lean towards? Are they going to continue to provide, you know, services? Are they not looking to do that anymore? Like, I know it'd be too early to ask, but have we been hearing anything from any other board members?
Well, we've heard through the grapevine that they're more receptive to the plans that we'd thrown out before in the past as compared to, you know, the discussions that we'd had. And I think it's because of things that have happened, you know, like the maze bill and things like that. Um, we have not had meetings directly. There was a time when I was here in the past where two council members and myself would go down to I I D, uh, down at Imperial and meet with them to discuss our plans. And um, you know, at points and times they were receptive, but ultimately they were rejected because I I D did not want to create a utility within the utility. Well, I can, you know, now that there's been some momentum, they're meeting, they're hearing from, you know, the, the cities here. Um, I, I know it's a big issue and it should be because we are paying sixty-one percent. There needs to be representation. If I I D wants to be here and serving, there needs to be representation from Riverside County. And from what I understand, there's still not the ability to change that. Even though in discussions, you know, they're, they're very worried about their water rights. And um, that's understandable, but we have nothing to do with their water. And we've told them, we just want to govern over electric only. And I don't know exactly what the hangup is, but there, there's almost like a lack of trust that if you get into one thing, you don't want to move into the other. And oh, we don't have a, a, a hand in the fight, you know, as far as water goes. And, and they're going to be very busy with the U S and everything else with the drought on the Colorado River Basin anyhow. That's a whole other subject for them, but um, we just need to stay focused. We need to, we need to make sure that, that they hear us. And I know that, you know, as we get in and talk to council and, and try to push a plan forward, we will be meeting with them again. And I, I, I'm hoping I'm still here um, to do that. I'd like to be, I got a lot of experience with meeting with them. And so I, I would like to see this thing through. I, I know that um, it's going to take some time, but it, it it's very important to us because um, Ryan had said too, eight percent right now, whatever is wheeled through electric to the north is going to C V W D. Normally cities get that. There's normally a franchise fee. If you look at the amount of money we collect from the U U T, it's five percent. We collect about one point eight million dollars. Uh, we would be getting a franchise on top of that. And I think we talked about it during the budget that if with that eight percent, it would help out our budget to the tune of about two point four to two point five million dollars, which is something we should be getting anyhow. This all happened before we were established, so we missed out on that. But that's something that every city that has Edison or S D G N E or, everybody gets eight percent. We should be getting that too when we don't. Um, that would, that's going to help our finances, our ability to go out and raise taxes or, or find other ways to um, raise money, funds to pay for city services besides economic development. It's kind of limited as to what we can do. This is a big tool in our pocket to be able to afford to do things in the future.
Thank you, Bill. I mean, for me, Bill, it's like, show me the money. I mean, I, I'm going through these options and some of them can be combined. Um, you know, but what I want is one thing and what can we, what we can afford is another. And what our residents can afford is another. And so, you know, by now, I would have liked to see more of what it's going to cost us. And then also is, you know, while the options came out, is that what is that looking at, you know? And so I would like to see, you know, what you guys are recommending. I would like to see what it's gonna, it, what those are going to cost for the creation, for maintaining it, for sustaining it. You know, there's a lot of things here we have to take into consideration. I feel that we're very behind. I mean, we're all very behind when you think about it. But I do think we're a bit more behind than some of our neighboring cities um, that have been looking at this uh, bit more and that kind of already zoomed in to some options already and are moving forward with it. You know, and we're still looking at, or we haven't even gotten to the financial aspect of it. And so that concerns me. You know, how much longer is this going to take for us to be able to actually start seeing what options, you know, we're considering? Uh, some of the options that I've seen, I mean, I don't even think that they're doable. Like, I think, what is it, one A, you know, for it to stay as is? Well, it really can't stay as is because we don't know what I I D is going to do in ten years. So some of these are automatically eliminated, you know, but, but what are our plans? And what is a timeline for us to start seeing what, how it's going to impact us financially? And then also obviously residents, you know, how much of the burden are they going to pick up on what option we're going to move forward with? Um, yeah, just, and then by now also, you know, I know when it comes to the financial portion of it, that's your background. That is where you're extremely strong at. Um, and then also working with, with I I D. And there's been a lot of challenges even with getting more power out to certain areas. It's kind of, you know, we thought we were just there and then they pulled it back on us again. It was really frustrating. Um, but, you know, back to um, Councilmember Virgins, when it cut up, statement when it came to the directors is, you know, we should be initiating those meetings. We really should. We can't wait on them to reach out to us and what they think. You know, we need to know what we're going to do and whether we're going to be the lead agency or not. I, I know that's a lot of questions and that's a lot of information I've given you, but you know, what, what, what are we looking at here?
And, and we will. There, there will be a plan that comes back to the council and it will be uh, discussed because there's threat of litigation and anything that we do, possibly taking over a system or whatever. And so we'll discuss it in closed session and we will give council the plan on how we move forward. And that will involve meeting with the I I D board again. Um, promise you that. Um, Brian did bring up something that did come up at the Energy Commission meeting too, though, that was very disappointing. And he's right, there's no financial information. I I D would turn it over. It's going to be critical that we get a hold of that information because it will also justify and show us that we can do it on our own and it is profitable. And we can try to get close to what we need to as far as a rate goes, because we also don't want sticker shock in the rate. But we also know that just as, you know, if we do not raise our rates on water or sewer or whatever, at some point you're going to catch up. And I I D has got a surcharge on their bill right now, and that's our first step in trying to catch up. But they're not putting away anything right now for capital, you know, um, improvements and replacement for that matter. So, and their financials would let us know that, but if they're not releasing their financials, I, you know.
And so um, you know, I'm going to reach out to some of my colleagues in neighboring cities. And as far as the financial portion of it, you know, if they're not providing it, could we move forward with our own? I mean, and again, I know that when it comes to the financial portion of it, that is your strength. And also in uh, the relationships with I I D, you know, but, you know, shouldn't we have someone who, you know, is an energy? You know, shouldn't we have someone who, you know, is an energy expert and can tell us what actually. This infrastructure is going to look like and what it's going to cost as well.
Great.
Okay, so are we looking into, you know, bringing in someone who's an energy expert? Has that been started?
We we have, we we actually have been. In fact, when we met with I I D years ago, um we've had a consultant with us. It's very familiar with their operations and. And that individual is still with us. And so um they're providing us quite a bit of.
Okay, good. So hopefully by, I mean, we have six months left in this year. So I hope that we're able to provide some type of timeline or some movement. Prior to the end of the year because just like you lose sleep over it, I also lose sleep over it. And like I said, I just see, you know, all these months going by. And there's a lot of critical information that we're missing, you know, for us to make a decision even of what the options could possibly be. So.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, can we get a copy of that letter when it's ready to be sent over?
Yes, well, I'll send over the the present, this presentation and the actual study. And then when we get the draft letter together, I'll send that over for council review.
Wonderful, thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Any other questions from the council? No, for the questions, uh moving on to ready communication. Any ready communication, Dalia? Okay, uh consent calendar. It is requested that missing item must be acted upon simultaneously unless separated. Discussion and or action is requested by a council member or a member of the audience. Uh council colleague, there's a lot of items, uh ten uh to thirty four, uh twenty four items uh in this. What we pulled out two?
Mister Mayor Protim, if I can make a recommendation, we have an item under new business that uh. The potential seller has a a part engagement and would like to be heard prior to that. We can move item. Number thirty eight now with the council's res- uh respectable request. And and talk about item thirty eight now because they have to.
So, uh.
It's to the the thirty eighth approval purchase and sale agreement between.
Um. I support moving it forward. If 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 they're here and, you know, they're saying that they have to leave to leave. I don't want to bring, have to bring back this item.
Yeah. The council will hear that. We would move this item now to be heard.
Okay, we'll hear.
And I'm thirty eight, Gabriel Perez.
And uh thank you, member of the council, Gabriel Pedes, your Development Service Director. And uh I think we may have lost uh the director for Hidden Harvest. Um she had. Some commitments that are are kind of be beyond her control. So I'm not sure she'd be able to join us. The original reason I wanted to move up the item, but we'll proceed forward. Uh so this item is a purchase and sell agreement for the Hidden Harvest site. This is located at Peter Rabbit Lane. Um next, next slide. Um so we've been doing a lot for the re revitalization of Pueblo Viejo in the downtown. Which really developed as a grid pattern around the railroad. So historically, this was. Our our core and really centered around the the railroad along Grapefruit Boulevard. Um there's been a big transformation. In the downtown um in a short amount of time. So uh this is what it looks like now compared to what it was before. Um a lot of investment by U S Council and a lot of hard work by staff. Um just a lot of great new things coming in or has developed, really putting investment in some of our small businesses. Um some of our local residents that are uh operating these small businesses. Really improving the infrastructure along Grapefruit Boulevard, seeing uh that corridor is a strong asset for the city. So the Hidden Harvest site is a two point zero nine acre site. There is an existing seventeen thousand eight hundred square foot industrial building. There's a two-story office. Um the records show it was built in nineteen thirty three. Um but we think it's earlier and I'll explain why. Uh the Produce Family, Tuchini and Gianda operated it. That Tuchini and Gianda branding is still on the building, very faded at the roof. Uh was a packing house and does has agricultural cooling in the building. Eight thousand and squared feet of cooler space, four thousand of it has been restored. It's in the manufacturing service zone. Here's the site and so it's pretty close to our existing downtown, located along the railroad. Uh if you look at the Sanborn maps from nineteen twenty eight, it is actually shown there. That's why we think it's older than nineteen thirty three. It was actually identified as the Coachella Valley Grape Growers Association back then. So it had the historic presence in the city. Uh this is an older. Um aerial that shows the the packing house, um but also shown here is the old train station that used to be located there. Fifth Street was a street that connected over the railroad at that time. Uh we do own a easement across the railroad, so Fifth Street was intended to cross over the railroad that easement still exists. So there is a possibility to create. Pedestrian or vehicular connections across the railroad that was closed off as it's shown here in the two photos. Looking on both sides of uh Grapefruit Boulevard and on the side of the Peter Rabbit Farms. These are photos of the site and this is the packing house looking in the front. Um and Hidden Harvest operates here. They. Do produce rescue um out in the agricultural fields and provide. That food to over fifty thousand people in the Coachella Valley every month. Um there's a two-story office. This is what it looks like inside the building. Um so you know, very much like a packing house and warehousing. Um there is an existing office inside that Hidden Harvest would like to lease from the city for a five-year term. As well as one of the cooling rooms, but there's three cooling rooms as shown. Uh there's plenty of opportunities for the site that, you know, we've discussed with Hidden Harvest, a food hub, small business incubator, farmer's market. Uh agricultural heritage park, job training, event venue space, and then potentially for passenger rail station in the future. Um it's consistent with a lot of our goals in the general plan, and so this would. Take us a big step forward in implementing about five of our implementation actions in the general plan around agriculture and food security. Um and uh there's a lot of examples where doing a lot of revitalization around the railroad has been successful, like the real yard in Santa Fe. Could be a small business incubator. Um from the left is something that you would see at Claremont Packing House where. It's an opportunity for small businesses and a rehabilitated historic packing house. Hidden Harvest actually developed some plans for the building and this was, you know, probably about ten years ago. And they saw it as a gathering space for the community. Um this is the site plan they developed, so there would be teaching gardens and a fake row um in classrooms inside the building. Some more renderings of what that would look like. And this is what the teaching gardens would look like. And then here's some images, what we could potentially do, and these are just images of other teaching gardens in other cities. Uh as an activist, this would be a nine hundred thousand dollar purchase price. The appraisal that we did was eight hundred ninety thousand dollars. Part of um this deal would be um securing Hidden Harvest, which we think they do amazing work in the community. They would still like to do that. Uh over the the next five years. Um and so um the lease would be a dollar per year, but there would be a city obligation for water electricity services. At thirty thousand dollars over a five-year period. But having them there also helps secure the site until we can figure out what we would like to do with the property. And there are several ideas that we talked about in the presentation. And uh so there's, there is a recommendation before you, um before move on, we do have a small clip because this site was actually part of it. Um Hillhauser uh vid- video in the past. So if you remember Hillhauser, he did the California Gold um. Uh on on PBS. And so Christie, I just also want to thank Christie uh Porter because. The reason why this is going forward is a lot to do with the dedication that she has and her love for Coachella. Uh she had to leave early, but you'll see her in this video.
It's deserted. It has a wonderful sound to it. It's dirty, but it's got potential. Now, is this, is this where the food will be brought? Is this where my head of call flower will eventually end up?
This is where your cauliflower will eventually end up, but quickly. The idea is, as we saw, that after market is already laying out there in the field, so we are. Our our goal is to get it fixed quickly. We have to store it here for a little while, we will, but. The idea is quickly get it out of the field. We've got thirty seven agencies, but it will come through here.
It will be the central clearinghouse, right?
It will. We will wash it here. We'll probably pack it here in boxes and deliver to the other agencies. They just are small, some of them have trucks, they don't have refrigerated storage and things like that. This project already made three refrigerated storage and available in elementary schools around the valley, but we have refrigerated. A pantry in elementary school, the only one in California through this project already.
So you're a busy person, I think.
Yes, yes, but I love it.
Now, where is the cooler? Where is the turn I box?
We have seven thousand square feet of what was once cooler space. Um and when we first made an offer on the building, that's when maybe it was wise and we needed cooler space, but. We found that someone had stolen the cooler unit. That was going to be about sixty thousand dollars to replace it and have it installed. So. We're still in the figuring out phase. Well, it is. I know it is, but matter of fact, but it's the.
You think you know what it is?
Well, all buildings like this have to be inspected by the building inspector. So recently, the Coachella Building Inspector and I. Were doing the inspection on this building and we. The door opened like that and we went through these flaps and the doors landed behind us and we found ourselves locked.
First time I visited this valley. This is one of the first packing sheds that I came to. And in those days, they were still packing foreign here. And you notice how narrow the door is, and that's because in those early years, uh what was during the early seventies. They were still using hand carts. Uh and this shed, as I said, I think was originally in the thirties. So for the the design of this shed is so old that new equipment can't be used in it.
It's a different thing if when you know the history. Because, you know, for me, coming in here and looking at that, I would never understand. That the door is a certain size, it probably built at a certain time and, you know, all of that.
And in those uh early years, it was traditional that they would paint the name of the facility on the roof. And I believe part of the name is still on the rock, yeah, Peking, Indiana. And the major, major construction here for here in the thirties and forties and fifties.
Well, it was major at one time. It was busy. It was, it was a lot of activity going on here. And if you had your way of people from the desert. How long before uh we can come back and and see this place common?
We'll come back in a year and we'll shop. Really, but come back in six months and we'll show you.
Thank you. And uh you know, I I I just want to uh. Point out that we do have a representative hidden harvest here, I believe, uh Megan Nelson, Communication Director. So uh they might have a few words to say. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, let me know.
Hi, Christie did have to go. Um so she left me a little note that she would like to say. Again, my name is Megan Nelson. I'm the Communication Director for Hidden Harvest and Assistant Executive Director. Um Coachella is a vibrant and exciting city and the kind of colleague and partnership that Hidden Harvest would love to have. With you. This building has been well-loved and uh by Hidden Harvest since two thousand. And we know that the city will make it more and more exciting. Thank you for bringing this much loved and very used uh building. Um. To the city to do good things and bring this building into its next life. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any uh comments or questions from our council to staff and or uh. In a harvest, uh Gabriel, can you stay up too? Because in case anyone has any questions? Any questions? No questions, I'll make a motion to move forward.
Sorry, I just have a a comment. Uh Gabriel, if you can provide some of the um. Potential uses for the building after the five-year mark. And I say this because. You know, it's nine hundred thousand dollars and people are going to be questioning why would we, you know, buy something that's nearly a million dollars. And so. I want to make sure that, you know, our residents in the community understands that we have the potential to make this money back and more through economic development. It is close to the rail, so there's plenty of opportunities there down the line, down the line. But um I think um I think it'll be beneficial if, you know, our residents knew some possible uses. Of the building so that they understand why we're spending money on it.
Yeah, definitely. And we do think we're getting a good deal on the property. Um. This is due to the relationship the city has had with um Hidden Harvest and Christie Porter over the years. Um but we actually may start doing rehabilitation on the building in the next few years, right before the end of the five years. So we'll pursue grants. Uh we'll be working closely with um Selena on locating those grants, and we think there's opportunity to do. Some of the things that we outlined there, like making it a food hub, making a small business incubator, uh possibly a commercial kitchen. Doing the teaching gardens. And so some of this could be as early as the next two years, and we've communicated to Hidden Harvest about that. That we would do whatever we can to keep them there while doing some of this work. So there's going to be a lot of coordination between the city and them to make this really happen.
Good, thank you. And I I vote for the commercial cottage that we've been talking about that quite a bit, so. But thank you for providing some of those opportunities down the line.
Yeah, thank you, council.
Any further comments? Uh I'll make a motion to approve uh item number thirty eight. A second. Uh roll call, Mister Train. Odalia, actually, now you're here, uh the city clerk.
Uh council member, Dr. Figueroa.
Aye.
Council member Vir- Virgin.
Aye.
Uh council member uh Delgado.
Yes.
And Mayor Protim Galarza.
Aye.
Okay, and uh Mayor Hernandez is absent.
All right. A motion carries for zero. As we move back to consent calendar. Uh uh we have again twenty four item, uh twenty two items to were pulled. Again, uh just a reminder for those that weren't here, we're pulling item number thirty one and thirty two because they were repeated. On the, on the, on the uh uh agenda. Um just for reference, uh item number thirty one is repeated is is it will be an item. Is is item number twenty seven and item number thirty two that was also pu- pulled is item number twenty one. Uh uh any uh co- any council member wants to pull any one item?
Just wanted to have a discussion on thirty three and thirty four, pull those two items.
Pull thirty three and thirty four?
Yeah, it's a quick discussion. You can do thirty four first before we do thirty three.
Any other items? All right, uh at the request of our count, a a council member, Dr. Figueroa, will pull item thirty three, thirty four. Uh uh. Respect, uh item number thirty four authorized of a construction agreement for Vista Escondido Landscaping and Park Improvement, project L L zero four to. Urban Habitat uh for one point one million dollars and allocate one point one from an undesigned it. Uh L M D thirty three fund balance. Uh council member Dr. Figueroa, what are your comments or questions?
Just a quick question. I saw that in there, they're not going to have the shade structure, right? Because it'll go in a deficit. And so this is that park that sits right in the center in that community, right?
It is the park and three retention basins that were not landscaped so that the entire scope would be in- installation of the landscape for the three basins and installation of the park space.
Okay, because right now is the park just kind of barren with no lighting?
Correct. Um all of those spaces are raw land right now.
Okay, okay, so that's.
We will bring back the shade structure once the fund um recup- recuperates essentially. I think that within a couple of years, we'll be able to. Reevaluate installation of the shade structure to the playground area.
Would, because this is in a, in a housing community, you can't uh. Like work with Selena and get like grant money to get the the shade structure anytime sooner or?
We can. Um we will, we always look for grant funding for actually all of our park spaces, so we can definitely look for that.
Yeah, I think it's important because that that's a brand-new community got built out, have the rest of it did, and and then there's been people without, you know. That space because it's, you know, it's very important for the community there, right? So I think. If we can get a shade structure sooner rather than later, I think it'd be beneficial, especially for that community, especially if there's a lot of young families in there, so.
We will, and we'll also evaluate if we have some savings operationally um to be able to bring that forward.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see if we could put in the D C grammar balls in that circle.
Yeah, and then just in case our residents are questioning again, why are we putting so much money? Is that. Where that park is supposed to be is just, it looks like an empty parcel. It looks like a house should have gone up there. So it is needed there. Thank you, Marson.
Welcome.
Item, uh, thank you so much, Merz. Item number thirty-three, a proven art and public place proposal for a mural celebrating the importance of maintaining the city-Coachella sister city relationship with the city of Mexicali in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, there is a presentation, you want to see the presentation?
Yeah, 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 that would be great.
Councilmember, I mean, uh, Councilmember, Selena?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers, Selena Jimenez, Director of Economic Development. Uh, the item before you is, as Mayor Protem mentioned, a mural celebrating the importance of maintaining the city of Coachella's sister city relationship with the city of Mexicali. And basically, the proposed art mural is something that both cities believe in as it fosters relationships with neighboring international cities like the city of Mexicali and as they play an essential role in in creating a more prosperous world through exchanges and initiatives. In this case, we are celebrating that relationship through the arts. And and we believe that the value of relationships across borders is not not only changes the lives of individuals, but helps both communities to thrive. And so the city of Coachella is championing prosperity by fostering bonds between people from different communities through this art initiative. And so the submitted proposal is a painted mural project that is approximately a hundred ninety-seven feet in length and twenty-three feet high, again, celebrating the city of Coachella's relationship with its sister city, the city of Mexicali. And first, just a little bit about the artist. Jorge Alberto Gomez Castro, known as Bombs, the artist, is an artist who had his beginnings in the nineteen nineties graffiti art movement in Mexicali, Mexico, at the tender age of twelve. Uh, during that time, he was influenced by hip-hop music, which later complemented his career in marketing. Uh, he has more than fifty murals under his belt and has become one of the most prominent muralists in the urban genre by gracing commercial buildings with his work, pub-public plazas, restaurants, including government buildings. Uh, his work has gained the praise of the Los Angeles Times and in recent times. And so here are some of his art renderings, just samples of his work. And before you is option one, this is his proposed art mural. And as you can see, there's two arms that are hand-holding. And and it says Coachella on one side, Mexicali on the other, and you see some artistic elements behind each of the city's names. Uh, you see like the palm trees depicting depicting the desert climate here. Uh, and then also the the frontera or, you know, like the the border, and so they're depicting it like like the Sonoran Desert sort of. And and they also wrote in ciudades hermanas or sister cities. And so, you know, the artist explained that the circle in the center is water. So water is like life, life-giving. And so that was the reasoning behind that element there. And then the little tattoos or would appear like tattoos on the hands. Uh, the one on the Coachella side actually is representative of one of our local tribes. And it's a, it's a, I guess, a universal symbol for indigenous people. And then the other one on the Mexicali arm or hand is also representative representative of the indigenous people of Mexico. Uh, so that's what those two symbols symbolize. And so this is option one, and the artist did offer up a second option, which we'll show you next. Uh, so here, he thought he would add the element of like the city of Coachella monument entrance, entrance, entrance sign on the left, and then he added the water tower for Mexicali on the right. And then, of course, to kind of not distract from those elements, he removed the colorful the colorful placement that was on the word Coachella and Mexicali. As you can see back here, there was colorful elements behind the letters. And so in the second option, he removed that. And then, uh, let me see, yeah, I think those are the two options. And so here's the budget breakdown. The artist is requesting twenty-five thousand dollars. That would include installation costs and other installation costs related to the equipment rental. Since this is a very large mural space, he will have to be lifted in a crane-like, you know, those cranes that lift people up and down. And then he has other costs such as materials. He's actually bringing in his own materials from Mexicali. And then the last budget line item is to cover like travel, video, photography, and mobility. And this concludes my presentation. Want to have any questions?
My only question is, it's going to go in that building where there's an empty lot, so we're going to make sure that whatever goes in that lot doesn't cover this picture. Uh, you know, it's pretty mural symbolizing the the sister city thing, so I just want to make sure that nothing gonna, you know, prevent that from getting lost, because you know what happens, you build something and you have something pretty.
Yes.
And I also wanted to see the two different options that you had, because on there, I only saw one, so. Thanks for showing, I think the first one is, I like the first one the most, I'm not sure, so.
I like either or, but I I want to be sure that we, um, I I see Alfred Wong, the Director of Institute for the Mayor's Office on Culture in Mexicali is present, and Gustavo from the Mayor's Office in Mexicali is also present, as well as the artist. You want to give him an opportunity just to introduce themselves?
Yes, please. Can we, uh, please give him the opportunity to be speakers promoted to?
Uh, Alfred Wong?
Yeah.
Uh, Gustavo, Siona? Siono and?
Jorge Alberto Castro.
Bombs, the artist.
Bombs, yeah.
Yeah.
There he is, okay.
Are they now presenters?
Si, no se escucha, Gustavo?
Hola, hola.
Buenas noches.
Que tal, buenas noches. Hello to everyone, nice to meet you.
Como estamos, Gustavo, ese, no hay preguntas, pero quería dar la oportunidad a nuestros colegas de Mexicali, a usted y Alfredo Wong y al artista. Tienen la oportunidad de meterse como panelistas y si 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 pueden, no es, no, no.
Claro que sí, con mucho gusto, no sé si ubicaste a a Bombs y Alfredo, están conectados también.
Did we give them a presenters option? Dicen que tienen la opción de prender su cámara ya. Promote, que es?
Jorge Alberto, si puede prender su cámara?
Uh, uh, Alfredo, si mira la cámara? There you go.
Ya veo Alfredo ahí.
Okay.
Hola, Jorge. Se escucha?
Escucha, verdad?
Nomás si se pueden presentar, no hay preguntas, pero queríamos, si, ya, mire que estaban conectados de Mexicali. Uh, si se pueden presentar.
Está, está en.
Gustavo, empieza tú, empieza.
Okay. Yo, yo sí me escucho, ¿verdad?
Sí.
Ah, perfecto, pues tomo, tomo la voz. A nombre del gobierno de Mexicali, del artista invitado, se encuentra también nuestro director de arte y cultura municipal. Estamos muy entusiasmados por esta invitación y por este hermanamiento que estamos retomando. No es algo nuevo, ya viene de años atrás. Y ha sido un gusto convivir con Steven, con Atalí y algunos miembros de el equipo de Coachella. Son bienvenidos, los tuvimos acá en la, en la casa municipal hace unas semanas. Y esta es una buena oportunidad para construir una agenda, no solamente para este mural, sino para diversas acciones en pro de del turismo, en pro del desarrollo económico. Y hay una serie de temas que hemos venido platicando y que esto solamente es el primer paso. Entonces cuentan con nosotros, somos muy emocionados y aquí estamos dispuestos a a lo que haga falta poner de nuestro esfuerzo también.
Gracias. Boom, se puede quitar el mute? No, no lo escuchamos.
Netalí, tú tienes la opción de quitarle el mute?
Ya, ya le mandaron a decir ahí que la quite. Ahí está.
Hola, ¿escucha?
Sí.
Uh, buenas tardes, este, mi nombre es Jorge Gómez, aquí artista local de Mexicali. Este, aquí esperando para, en caso que se proceda al mural, este, daría todo lo posible porque quede muy bien este mural. Mural en el plástico y que represente nuestra, nuestras, este, landmarks o como se diga en inglés, no sé muy inglés, pero este que quede muy representativo por parte de las ciudades hermanas.
Muchas gracias, Jorge, muchas gracias, Gustavo. Uh, y nos mandas el saludo a la Alcaldesa Norma, este. Any questions, council colleagues, or comments?
Just, you know, I'll come ahead for Selena, but. Buenas, buenas días, aquí son las noches, buenas noches, gracias a para poder conocerlos y su proyecto que trae aquí a la ciudad de Coachella, verdad, para poder honrar las hermanas, las ciudades hermanas, entonces es mucho gusto poder conocerlos. Ojalá los podamos conocer en persona cuando vengan.
Pronto.
Gustavo nos dijo que el día que, que cuando terminemos, cuando termine el mural, que va a venir la Alcaldesa a acompañarnos y y celebramos en un evento.
Es correcto. El, lo ideal y el objetivo es que nuestra presidenta Norma Bustamante y junto con el equipo del gobierno Mexicali así estamos allá y tengamos un evento de celebración que dé inicio a la agenda veinte, veintitrés, veinte, veinticuatro de las ciudades hermanas de Mexicali y Coachella.
Bueno, nos da gusto como el regidor que es parte del comité de ciudades hermanas, nos da gusto estar en esta posición para poder poner un propósito, un propósito para celebrar las ciudades hermanas, ya que la ciudad de, los residentes de la ciudad de Coachella y nuestros vecinos vamos a Mexicali, ya sea por la cuestión de la salud, del medicina o el turismo, que el arte que ha existido, la la comida, ya sea la comida china o los mariscos que
Bien.
celebran, uh, entonces nos da gusto que nosotros también los vamos a recibir. Uh, una idea también que se me va a la mente, ahorita que teníamos el grito, la celebración del grito, si no hay una manera que nos manden una banda y ahí le mandamos a Maritza.
Tenemos a alguien, sí, tenemos a alguien que podemos mandar.
A, nos mandan un grupo o dos para.
Claro que sí. Ya sea sábado o domingo.
Va a ser el domingo, si, diecisiete. Uh, ahí, ahí Maritza, se pone en comunicación con ella para que nos manden un grupo.
Claro que sí.
Pero ya sea, ya sea algo, algo único de Mexicali.
Que los pongan a bailar.
Ándale. Muchas gracias, mucho gusto.
Sí, hola, Gustavo y Bombs, the artists. Uh, mi papá es de Mexicali, vino con una beca de, o futbolista, con una beca aquí en la ciudad de Coachella y aquí se quedó, conoció a mi mamá y nunca se fue, nunca se regresó. Ah, en Mexicali casi somos dueños de Conagua, toda mi familia ahí todos trabajan. So, muchísimas gracias y.
Entonces traes sangre cachanilla.
Sí.
Bien.
Sí, me, me, me dicen nena o la cachanilla me decía. So, muchísimas gracias por la, por la representación aquí en la ciudad de Coachella, muchísimas gracias, thank you.
So I have a motion to.
Oh, which option?
Uh, one, I like one, I don't know, council members? Option, there are two options?
Oh, you know what I was going to ask you, Selena, is what did the Arts Commission choose? Uh, actually, this item, we don't have a, an Arts Commission at the moment. Um, that's an item for later in the, on the agenda. Uh, we have to make Arts Commission, Cultural and Arts Commission appointments. And I believe the mayor makes those appointments, and so we currently, we're not able to take an item like this to the commission. So we brought it to council. Why don't we have an Arts Commission? Don't they usually stay on until we appoint new commissioners?
They weren't participating, so we're in the, in the process of getting new commissioners. We have six applicants that will be brought to you for approval, because now we don't have an active arts commission.
What do you mean they weren't participating?
We weren't getting quorum.
And I, I think we have. We didn't have enough applicants for a long while. We actually had to ask other people who applied for other commissions to see if they would consider applying for the Arts Commission, and and they said yes. So I was able to get only six, so five and then an alternate. So I do have six people that are committed to becoming arts commissioners. So for the sake of the process, can we, can we kick this back just for the options, so you can get input from them, or would that take too long? I think that might take too long, but for.
I think the, the goal is to accommodate the the schedule of the Mexicali representatives, and I think we have the, the schedule early, late July, early August. If we were to, you know, appoint the commissioners, by the time they meet, we probably would exceed that deadline. So we brought directly the council for approval and recommendation.
What's the deadline? I think, I think we identified was the July twenty-sixth. And so, yeah, and so just with the legislative calendar, it makes it really difficult to to just wait around or what have you. Okay, sorry, can you, you show the option number two? So this is option one, and then this is option two. I prefer option one. But again, that's, I don't recall it.
Remember, Virgin?
I like option number one as well.
Okay, yeah.
Colorful.
We have consensus, um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, to approve the whole consent.
Oh, yes, uh, now that we covered all items, let's approve an entire consent calendar. Um, items number ten to thirty-four, with the exception of thirty-one and thirty-two. Uh, so we have a motion by councilmember. What was it?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, Councilmember Reevekin, and a second by Councilmember Dr. Figueroa. Um, Delia?
Um, Councilmember Dr. Figueroa.
Aye.
Councilmember Virgen.
Aye.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Velaza.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and Mayor Hernandez is absent.
Uh, moving on to new business calendar, legislative and administrative. Uh, item number thirty-five, Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce report for March twenty twenty-three to June twenty twenty-three.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. I'm going to introduce Brandon Marley to do this presentation per our professional services agreement with the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce. They provide us a quarterly report, and he is here to present that report.
Brandon, a few, a few constituents were like, why is the mayor sitting down? I was like, no, they just, they just look alike, they're not.
Like I thought he was absent.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think about the opportunity to meet most of you. I'm fairly new, about a month and a half in. I'm excited, looking forward to the future. We'll go over a little bit. I wasn't here for this full report, but staff's given me a bit of an update and some exciting things for going forward. Uh, so we'll go ahead and, oh, I am, you have a clicker, cool. Uh, so I first want to introduce to SAP, we've had some shift and changes, but some really exciting additions that we've had. Diana Soto is still on board with us. She's holding the role of Senior Director of Operations. Um, she's in town, so when we see you all tomorrow at the event, you'll get to see Diana as well. Um, so we also have Joe Beth Rudolph, which you probably have met as well, our Director of Business Development. Um, new to our team, actually, three newer to our team, Tina Rodriguez, she's our new events manager. Um, so the name is very similar, so before you would email E. Rodriguez, now email T. Rodriguez, very simple change for events. Uh, but she's great, she comes with a lot of experience, comes from the Omni. Uh, did about five to six major events like you'll have tomorrow evening a week. So she, she's doing a lot of these parts in her sleep, the the outdoor stuff will be new to her, so. Uh, Terry Cates and Sylvia Tenorio are both kind of holding down as our membership team. Their titles will be shifting, Terry's will stay similar, Sylvia will be changing, but we have a big focus on membership going forward. Uh, so we're always have, but we really want to narrow in and and zone in on that. Um, and Sylvia actually works out of our Coachella office, so she'll be here Monday through Thursday, manning the visitor center. She's great, has been involved in the community for a while. You'll be seeing a billboard board going up of her here soon. She was awarded for the Senior Inspiration Awards this year by the county. Uh, so just a great volunteer. She was an ambassador with us for a very long time. Um, and now we're very happy to have her as part of our team. Uh, and so as we're sitting right now, we have eight hundred and forty total GCVCC members. That does not include our two hundred and fifty members that we also have for Southwest Arts Festival. Um, so that's our, our members that fall outside of that event. Uh, seventy-seven percent of that are Coachella businesses. So that's our members that fall outside of that event, 77% of that are Coachella businesses, keeping in mind that we run across the entire region. So you're looking at an incorporated Riverside County, you're looking at all the nine cities, even some up into the high desert and out towards Salt and Sea as well, not as many in those areas, but it stretches pretty far. We run about 150 plus regional events a year and you've seen about 10,000 plus marketing impressions in the last 60 days. We're doing some things to ramp that up, in July we'll be bringing in a new marketing coordinator, that should be going up online here soon. Looking for that position, because we really wanna beef up our communications and improve that. As far as general marketing, we did about 13 total weekly newsletters, this time reporting of course in the last three months. Really trying to get out information about what's going on through the entire region and specific to the cities, we wanna make sure that we're sharing with our membership, not just things that we're doing and in the city of Coachella, but also the things that the city is doing as well, we think that's important, you know, we would look at the community and the region as a whole. We wanna try to bring some drive market in with you all as well to help boost up the businesses. We did three total city walks, we tried to do one about one a month, Sylvia is kind of reining that up and really heading those elements up. And then we had 250 total visitor center hours, we'll get more data as that going forward, I'm a bit of a data junkie myself, so you'll start to see some more statistics as far as how many average people we're seeing coming in. The sort of questions that they're looking for, all those sort of elements, as well as going forward, the city will start to see a live document that we have as far as the deliverables that we have on your contract. And you'll be able to see those in real time, that's how we'll be starting our staff meetings each week, really looking at those, so we make sure that we're not missing anything. We had four ribbon cuttings in the last 90 days, there were some more of course earlier in the year, but one recently, a very exciting one was Aldi, so we got a chance to go to that, that was a great event. Mr. Clemato just recently opened, they had been working on that for about a year, we actually brought them out to our regional event that we do with the other chambers and other groups in the area, I'm in Palm Springs at the Air Museum, so they got to go there and really showcase what they're doing and they were quite a hit at the event. We did a five chamber 101 and ambassador events, we're continuing to kind of beef that up, we're gonna be doing some hybrid with those our ambassadors, you know, they're boots on the ground, but they have their jobs as well, so we'll be doing some virtual some in person, some finding ways to engage more ambassadors and really get them invested into the community. Our chamber 101 events are continuing to go, they're great, it's actually has become, interestingly, in the past year, a recruiting tool for new members for us. Not only are new members coming in that have already become members with us, but we're seeing people wanting to come into our chamber 101s that aren't currently members. We welcome in and it's pretty much 100% close rate that we've had on that, so everyone that's come to those has really been able to see the value of the chamber as a whole. 25 in-person meetings, if you've met Sylvia before, she loves to be around people and she will continue to do that. We're really gonna lock in especially Thursdays for her going forward, where she's able to be out in the community and we bring another staff member into Coachella to man that office. So she'll be continuing to ramp that up as it goes. Local leadership, I do have a couple of board members present, I wanna thank them for coming and showing support, you actually have your new chair, Mike Chop is here as well. He'll be coming on tomorrow, we'll be sworn in as our new Coachella chamber chair. And we're doing some things to really try to ramp that up too, you have your regional representatives as far as Blaine Carrion and then the other members of the board as well, we really wanna increase and enhance that list, we're trying to Coachella is a different community than the rest of our cities, we're very aware of that and we really wanna try to pander to that as much as we possibly can to really understand what the business community is looking for as a whole, it's a lot more small businesses and we wanna make sure that has really good representation on our board. With that, I'll open to questions, comments?
Yeah, I, you know, first of all, Brendan, congratulations on your new post, you know, met you when you were doing the marketing and communications for the chamber years ago. You left for a while and got more skills, more technology, more network and now you're back with the chair, so congratulations, that's a big step in, and you're very young too, you're young and in this, in this, in this position and so which you know, the young, our city is a young city too and we know that under your leadership, we're gonna see innovative growth within the Chamber of Commerce, we look forward to working with you and so again, congrats, unfortunately because of work, I'm gonna miss tomorrow's event, but I was at your first event at the Cattle City State of the City. But fortunately we'll be out, I'll be out tomorrow, so I'll open up to our council, any comments, questions, ideas?
Keep up the good work, I like all the grand openings, I didn't get to go to Mr. Clemato, but I still haven't gone to go, but I did stop by the first day when they were doing soft lunch and they were even busy before they did their grand opening the first few days and talked to the owner and really a lot of cool stuff going on there, so.
It sounds like we're gonna have a bunch of.
Well, we're gonna have lunch with Mr. Clemato probably, so.
Yeah, it was a, it was a great spot, I went on Saturday, I was at the gym and some friends texted me they're gonna go over and, and I said, yeah, I'll meet you there and I get out of the gym when I'm done and my tires pop and the new Toyota tire, the new Toyota cars, they don't have spare tire anymore. And so like damn, I'll take care of this later and I just jogged, it's like half a mile from pilot, from pilot finish, I'm like the mariscos are already ready, you know, and the glamato is already served, so I just jogged half a mile to glamato and it was very, very good, it was worth the jog. And so, yeah, good.
I'll see you there tomorrow.
Good.
Thank you Brendan for the presentation, looking forward to, you know, more partnerships with the city and, and the chamber and yeah, excited for tomorrow's event and it's gonna be great, so thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
I do wanna have further discussions of how we can help out with the membership fees, we know that's, that's really difficult for our residents, so I wanna know how we can kind of compensate for that and maybe we can come to some type of agreement so that our businesses can start, you know, receiving some of those benefits, because I really do think that you guys do an outstanding job of representing and marketing, you know, some of the restaurants and businesses, you know, you guys are constantly kind of meeting in different locations, I think, which helps bring a lot of folks from the West Valley out to the city of Coachella. So I would like to have that meeting to see what we can do to kind of help these businesses out.
Thanks so much, I love that idea, I'd love to read about it.
Thank you.
Great, great comments, great ideas, colleagues, if there's no further comments, we'll move on to the next item, thank you so much.
Mr. Bear Protem, it's past eight o'clock during this time we do public comments.
Okay, well, for public comments?
We have one public comment, but it's under action item number 41 or public hearing item number 41.
We received a lot of those emails too.
No.
On the phone, I think those are another type for general public comments.
There's a, anybody online in Zoom who'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. We have one. Go ahead, unmute.
Martin, Martin?
Yes.
Your floor is yours.
Yes, good evening, the mayor pro tem, council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak, just as a reminder the Nine Cities Challenge, Blood Drive Challenge is starting July 1st, running through August 31st and City of Coachella is hosting its main drive on Thursday, July 13th, right across the street at the Coachella Library in the meeting rooms, one and two, from 12:30 to 6:30 and we encourage everyone to help support the local blood bank, maintain our local blood supply, you give blood, not only do you help save lives, but you're gonna get a $10 electronic gift card, which you can redeem to support local businesses, businesses right there in Coachella, like Starbucks, Domino's, CVS Pharmacy, or you can use them for Amazon or for over 100 different types of merchants that you get to choose, so it's a $10 e-gift card that you get to redeem for whatever you'd like to spend it on, plus a cool looking bucket hat that everyone's gonna be receiving for the Nine Cities Challenge. Last year we collected 33 pints there at the drive, City Coachella, we wanna get at least 40. So if you can please spread the word and get people to donate blood, we appreciate it very much.
This is Martina Redondo. There you go, man, welcome, good day again.
Yeah, the main city drive is Thursday, July 13th.
Thursday, July 13th, man, I'm out of town, can I donate a week ahead of time?
Sure, well, you can, you know, if we have a location in Coachella, you can go to our website, Lstream.org, again, that's Lstream.org and you can type in the zip code and find any drives in Coachella and you can donate or you can go to our Laquita donor center and mention you're donating for the city of Coachella and you will get credit, or the city will get credit for the donation. Again, it's a friendly competition to help maintain our local blood supply during the summer months and we could really use the support, we appreciate the support these last 10 years, this is our 11th year doing this. As a whole, City Coachella donated 75 pints of blood during the challenge. Again, we wanna get at least 100, but for the city drive, if we get at least 40, that's a great start.
Thank you, Martin, last year you came in prison, you brought us nice towels.
That was mine, yeah, he brought those in.
Is there a member? Well, thank you so much, any, any questions, comments from our council colleagues? Thank you, Martin.
Thank you so.
Thank you.
Any other public comments, general public comments? If there's no general public comments, we'll move forward to item number 36, Resolution Number 2023-31, approving amendments to the City of Coachella Management Employee Compensation Plan, Bill of yours.
Thank you, good evening, council. Two meetings ago, we came to you and you approved the MOU with the miscellaneous group, we've also gotten direction and we're almost finishing negotiating with the mid managers. At the same time, we also bring forth the executive group within the, under the MOU with the executive group. The salaries are exactly the same as what happened with miscellaneous and with mid managers, 7%, the first year, 5% second year, 4% in the third year and 3% in the fourth year. Retirement, anybody who's worked in CalPERS for a short period of time since 2013, I believe is when Pepper took place. The rate at what they pay on the, on their behalf increases over time or it can decrease based upon PERS returns. Their rates going up to seven and three quarters. The retiring medical premium remains the same, $647 and in fact that will not change, it's topped out for all bargaining groups. Health insurance, there's a change, CalPERS doesn't offer PERS Choice anymore, they now offer PERS Platinum, so that language changed. Just like we offered to the mid managers, if an employee works more than 100 hours or in the executive's point, 120 hours, any hours that they work over that, they'll get a one for one match. And that's if the executive is at a council meeting, if they're at events, things like that. We don't anticipate that happening much, but since it happened with the managers, we put it in also with the executives. Holidays, Indigenous Peoples' Day has been added. Vacation, any employees with 16 years or more or are able to cash in up to 160 hours, that was changed, it used to be less than that, we did that for the mid managers as well. And then longevity, anybody that has 20 years of service will be eligible for a 4%, one time it's continuous, but one time 4% to their pay is added. It's not personable, with that, if there's any questions of council, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, you've offered this to all, both of your groups that are represented by union. As I said, mid management has not voted on theirs yet, we will bring it back hopefully to the next meeting. We wanna get these done as soon as possible, the fiscal impact is about $80,000 for this entire group, it, when we put together the budget, it was in the budget, so there's no adjustment that needs to be made to next year's budget, it was already put into the budget. So with that.
Thank you so much, Bill, any questions or comments from our council?
Just as always, I wanna thank our employees for their dedication, their hard work, their commitment. And you know, I, I expect nothing less for it to continue for the next year and on, so thank you.
Motion to approve the Resolution Number 2023-31, proven amendments to the City of Coachella Management Employee Roundtable Station Plan.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you, we have a motion by council member Dr. Figueroa and a second by council member Vifcán, our secret, roll call?
A council member Figueroa, Dr. Figueroa, council member Virgen.
Hi.
Council member Delgado.
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Galarsa.
Hi.
Motion passes and the mayor Hernandez is absent.
You got it, moving on to item number 37, City of Coachella Resident Engagement Academy.
Good afternoon, members of the city council, Anaí Fernández, management analyst for the Development Services Department, and I'll be presenting on this item, the Coachella Resident Engagement Academy. Okay, so starting with a little bit of background, in 2013, the city of Coachella, as well as partner organizations, created the Coachella Civic Engagement Academy concept, which was created to create a space where committee members can have an opportunity to learn about the decision-making processes, local government functions and operations, as well as their impact on the public's health. It also was meant to develop an avenue for the city of Coachella's leadership to communicate its roles and functions. So the city's general plan does encourage active community engagement with its Coachella residents. Therefore, the resident academy will help in the implementation of the general plan for the city. Some of the goals for the academy are to develop an avenue for the city to communicate its roles and functions, increase civic engagement in the city, as well as provide residents with input opportunities and inform residents of how they can contribute to the city. The academy, it will also develop a system of community empowerment and bridge gaps between the community and government while raising awareness of civic participation barriers. So if we look at our neighboring cities, the city of Coachella is very distinct in its demographics, a lot of our residents here are mostly Spanish speaking, low income and a lot of them don't have higher education. So I feel like the academy will be essential for them to give them the civic knowledge that they need in order to participate more in government and maybe by the end of the academy have them be more enthusiastic about, you know, participating in commissions or maybe city events, meetings as well, community meetings, city council meetings. Some of the logistics for the academy are that it will be hosted by the Development Services Department, so I will be taking that role with staff as well. We will be starting the academy in the fall of 2023 and it will begin outreach in the summer, which is very soon of this year. We will conduct outreach through our social media platforms and flyer postings in both English and Spanish throughout our facilities, as well as our partner organization offices. The academy will be taking place at our Coachella library conference rooms with a total of 25 participants and it will be in both English and Spanish as well. We will be selecting a diverse body of participants, so staff will be taking role in this and food will be provided as well as an incentive. So the academy is proposed to be scheduled once a week for two hours in length, preferably at 6:00 PM on a weekday or on a Saturday, where committee members can be more involved and have the time, our directors and managers will facilitate each module to include a presentation and interactive group activity. May include field trips as well to our city facilities. Some of the modules would include the history of Coachella, parks and recreation, wastewater and water utilities, city finances, land use planning, building and safety, engineering and streets, community health and wellness, which is also one of a part of our general plan element. And it's important, it's been a priority for the city as well, as well as community engagement. So upon completion of the academy, our participants will be presented with a certificate of completion and a closing ceremony, we would like our mayor and city council to be involved as well. Riverside University Health System will provide evaluation services for the program to determine the program's effectiveness and creating, increasing civic engagement and awareness of the city government. So we have been in contact with the county, they're more than willing to participate and be a part of the academy as well. They will also be presenting on the community health and wellness portion of the academy. So there is a staff recommendation that the city council authorize the establishment of the Resident Engagement Academy for the city, as well as provide us any feedback or comments that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anaí, thank you for bringing this forth, it's a great item, you know, anything we could do to increase civic engagement, civic participation, you know, I dream of a day that this room is packed and, and then we can, you know, make a case to get a bigger building for city council meetings that are, you know, voter participation increases significantly, that people are aware about what we're voting for, what us and their, and then their other representatives are bringing to the table and I think this is a great way to increase civic engagement in our community, very happy to support this, wanna open up council comments, questions, concerns?
In one, just one, when you get the set dates, can you make sure that you add them to our calendars? So that we can, you know, know in the kind of, just kind of a breakdown what you're gonna top in case you want to. And it kind of, just kind of a breakdown what you're going to top in case you want to attend or which where, what meeting you want us to attend or alternate.
Oh.
Yeah, so that way, you know, we can participate, even just as participants, in case I want to go, I don't know, a little bit more about Coachella history, so.
Yeah, a calendar invites are, are very, very helpful. We, we get flooded with spam sometimes, or we may miss an email or two. But calendar invites are super helpful. So you could send that and with the note on it, so, yeah, that seems a great idea, Dr. Figueroa.
Uh, it's going to be bilingual, right? So are you going to have a translator in there or kind of how you?
Yes, yeah, there will be in English and Spanish.
So you're going to be using the, the headset? Okay, just want to make sure so people know when they get there. So that's very helpful for them.
Okay.
This makes me very happy. Some of the things that we're always getting, uh, from our residents, or at least I am, is spaces for that they can speak and be invited to. Um, one of the things that I've been asking for, for the past two years is to have listening sessions in different areas of the city. Um, again, because not only does it promote engagement, but us going out to them, I think is very beneficial, because many times they just don't know, you know, how to get connected or, you know, what spaces to provide comments in. So this makes me very happy. Um, and so hopefully, maybe we can connect some listening sessions to it if the academy is open to it. Um, RUHS is a great partner. Um, they're going to provide just so much on data when it comes to the health and, um, like diabetes and these red zones. I've met with them before and they just do a great job of also providing like healthy opportunities or healthy food options. So I'm very excited that they're going to be a partner as well. I'm, I'm looking forward to this. Thank you. Good job.
Great job.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be able to see this. Have we, I, I'm not sure if I was able to get that information, but have we done this in the past? Like, we've done this academy before?
No, it would be our first time. So this is going to be our trial and error.
Oh.
Hopefully it goes well, yeah.
It will go well. Yeah, this is very exciting. Um, you know, it's a good experience for all of us to, to be able to participate in some way. Um, the only thing I would just, you know, recommend is when you're there, also like remind them like, oh, by the way, you know, there's a council meeting, you know, this day, or our council meets, you know, the second and fourth Wednesday of the month. Um, and if you guys don't know, it's, you know, located in this place, that place. Um, but I think it's always really good to just kind of remind them and let them know, you know, it is a little. I think for some folks, it might be a little bit intimidating, but you know, make sure that they know they're welcome, they're supported, we want to see them here. Um, but every now and then just kind of, you know, throw it out there, like, by the way, there's a council meeting, something like that. Thank you.
Agreed. This is great. Uh, in, uh, the school district budgets, uh, you, they have, uh, the local control funding formula where you need to have local control, local, uh, involvement in the decision-making process. There's not an equivalent of that for, uh, city council fundings. Um, but, and so in, in, in the school districts, it's mandated that you do these separate things. And so it's nice that, and so there is opportunities for parents to learn about how to get involved in their schools and the decision-making in the school districts, but not so much in, in how to get involved with the citizens. I really enjoy this. And so I look forward to, to, uh, learning from this. So, and I mentioned that too, because it might be good to connect with the folks that run Alcap at the district, um, the local control and ability plan. Uh, because they, they, they do the, they've done, they've been doing this since Governor Brown passed the Alcap funding formula. And, uh, and so it'd be good to know, like, what has worked for them, what hasn't worked for them, and what are the best times or, or, or what time we shouldn't be doing it, so that we don't learn some mistakes that maybe other people already know. Um, and so they have a, you know, team on, on, on Alcap and LCFF, so. Um, yeah, other than that, uh, uh, great work, uh, uh, make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Council member Dr. Figueroa.
Aye.
Uh, council member Virgen.
Aye.
Council member Delgado.
Yes.
And, uh, Mayor Potem Galarsa.
Aye.
Motion passes and Mayor Hernandez is absent.
Gabriel, I'm sorry. Gabriel, thank you for catching up on some of these requirements, um, that are dated. Um, it, it's not going unnoticed, so thank you.
We already, uh, took action on item number thirty-eight. Thank you so much. Uh, uh, we're excited about the future and, and seeing what we, we, we come, what comes from that. And so we look forward to working with you all at Harvest, uh, at, uh, at Head and Harvest. Um, item number thirty-nine has been tabled up for staff recommendation at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, we are moving forward to item number forty, public hearing. Uh, we're gonna, it is, uh, uh, eight twenty-nine, we're going to open public hearing on an adoption of resolution number twenty-two-three dash four zero, affirming the solid waste rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and authorizing the collection of residential solid waste service charges, charges for fiscal year twenty twenty-three on the County of Riverside property tax roll. Maritza?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I have a brief presentation. Uh, this is an annual item that comes before the council based on um, impacts, uh, to the solid waste rate, which are updated annually, and they're basically impacted by two things. It's, uh, CPI, which impacts service delivery costs, um, of the hauler. And secondly, it's the cost to dispose of the waste at local landfills. So the rates, um, that are current, um, in this fiscal year, which is ending at the end of the week, um, our, for residential rate is twenty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents, and it will be going up two dollars and three cents to thirty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, um, based on the impacts, uh, again, by CPI and cost of disposal of waste. And for commercial, our rates are looking to go up from one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents for a, a, a three cubic yard roll-off, which is basically the most common service container that is provided for commercial businesses, to it's increasing nine dollars and twenty cents to a hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-eight cents. So the, um, the CPI increase is capped at five percent, so the service component of this increase is not higher than five percent. And then the, the difference thereof is coming from basically the trash disposal costs. So, um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, information on the rates was mailed out to all, um, our residents and commercial businesses, and we did complete the, um, the Prop two eighteen process last year, four or five-year period, which included, um, the increases that U C B for you.
Do we have any one on the public that has comments?
It's under item forty-one.
Forty, no, nothing under forty?
No.
Anyone in, uh, Zoom that would like to speak about that? Looks like nobody's raising their hand. Uh, council, any comments, questions?
Just question for Mike. Um, so like when you look at the proposed, um, tax file, so you, you know, Google search my, my own address, and so then you have like, um, you have your standard monthly rating, you have the additional trash, that's if you have an additional, um, container, okay, and that, right? I just want to make sure in case someone comes to me and says, why am I getting charged this? And then it's like, you have an additional trash. So if people don't have, then they're getting charged that they should contact your, your office. Okay.
I, I'm Mike, you know, Vertec Waste.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions, comments from council? None for customer, customer Delgado?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, do you have a motion on the floor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Potem, you have to open the public hearing.
I, oh. I opened it already. All right, um, since there's no one in the comments, so we'll close it now at, uh, eight thirty-two P M. Uh, desire from the council?
Motion to approve a public hearing, uh, adopt resolution number twenty-two-three dash forty, affirming the solid waste rates for five fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and authorizing the collection of residential solid waste services charges for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four on the County of Riverside property tax.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Um, Dylan?
Council member Dr. Figueroa.
Aye.
Uh, council member Virgen.
Aye.
Council member Delgado.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Potem Galarsa.
Aye.
A motion passes and Mayor Hernandez is out.
Great. Um, we're going to open up, it's, uh, eight thirty-three, we're opening public hearing for item number forty-one. City of Coachella zoning consistency update, general plan amendment number twenty-three zero dash zero three, zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-two dash zero three, and change zone number twenty-three zero dash zero one. A proposed update of the official zoning map and zoning ordinance for consistency with, with the Coachella general plan and amendments to the general plan twenty thirty-five and official general plan map. Gabriel?
Okay, thank you, council. Gabriel Bettis again. So this item is another implementation action for the general plan. Um, this is the zoning code consistency update. Uh, just to overview, um, we're going to go through the code updates, the general plan amendments that are part of, um, in front of you today, and some of the next steps. So I'll be giving the presentation first, and then I'll be passing it on to Simran Mahotra, who is our consultant with Raymond Associates and has been helping us with this process. So just, um, background, why are we doing this? Um, there, we have a few guiding documents in the city. One of them is the general plan, and that's the vision, the blueprint for the city's growth. Um, and, uh, so that was adopted in two thousand and fifteen. So there's a general plan map as well as policies in the general plan that we are supposed to follow as a city. Um, the implementation tool for the general plan is the zoning code, so that identifies, you know, all the development standards, the permitted uses in the city. So that's an important tool that we are trying to update to make it consistent with the general plan. Um, other documents that are important to the city are California Environmental Quality Act. Um, but, uh, as far as the general plan, uh, this is what it looks like, the cover of the general plan, adopted again, uh, two thousand and fifteen. It has, uh, required elements. Two of them are, are important for this update today. One is the land use element. And that establishes the general plan map as well as the different land uses in the city. Um, and then the other is a housing element. So the housing element, um, the, the last housing element required us to do some zoning updates to allow us to accommodate the, um, states, um, or the regions allocation to the City of Coachella for its housing needs. And that housing need is seven thousand eight hundred eighty-six units. So we have to figure out how we're going to accommodate those units in the city in the next eight years up to two thousand and twenty-nine. Um, and so adopting the zoning code update actually identifies the, the land uses, the zoning that would accommodate that housing. Our general plan looks like this. Um, so we do have goals that are identified in the land use element as well as the policies. And so this is just for the public benefit to kind of see how our general plan is structured. And there is a general plan map that looks like this, all the different colors for all the proposed land uses in the city. This tells you the type of density that's permitted in the city. Now that where commercial is going to go, where industrial uses are going to go, um, agriculture, open space. And we also have the zoning map. So there's two maps that we use in the city. The general plan map is, is kind of what's going to guide what's on our zoning map. And the zoning map is really what a lot of property owners wanted to know about, right? And it's going to tell them what they can do on their property. Um, so, uh, we actually need to update this zoning map to make it consistent with this general plan map. The head, so our zoning ordinance looks like this. Um, there's, you, you know, it's title seventeen of the municipal code, uh, identifies several chapters. So this is an example of the residential estate zone. That is one of the zones in the city, identifies an intended purpose, also has a list of permitted uses, so the type of uses that would be allowed, um, as well as development standards, right? So what are your setbacks? How high can you build a building? Um, so that's a lot of times that's important for someone that wants to do, uh, pursue a construction project on a property. Um, and there's other guidelines that we have in the city, uh, that we, we utilize. Uh, so we have one of them that's important is the Poblo Veho Implementation Strategy Plan. Um, that has a lot of guide, guidelines. Um, there were some sample, um, zoning code um, recommendations that we are trying to implement with this zoning code update. Uh, so the Poblo Veho Implementation Strategy Plan, um, in that plan that was developed a couple of years ago, it identified four recommended zoning districts. Um, but, uh, we thought that was too many districts, um, for our downtown, right? So four districts in downtown is probably too much for a small area. So we thought it would be difficult to administer and also would make it difficult to understand, probably also for the public as well. Um, so we worked on kind of streamlining that. Um, one of the things that we realized that Poblo Veho plan does not align with the general plan, right? So there is downtown general plan land uses, but there were some recommendations for downtown land use that don't really jive together. So, actually. Um, okay, if you look at the general plan map on the left, you could kind of see a red outline of the areas that do not match up with the Poblo Veho plan. So there were recommendations for, um, downtown zoning around the Veterans Park. Um, but if you look at the, the red, um, at the red boundary area, there are some, you know, there's a block on Sixth Street that is residential use. That's where you have the bank, you have the kidney center. That doesn't make sense. Basically, all those uses are now, today, non-conforming uses. So if we want to do mixed use, you really couldn't do that. And so what we want to do with the general plan, um, is also make sure that it's consistent with the Poblo Veho plan. And actually, I'm going to pass it on to Simran, because she's going to lead us through the actual zoning code updates, and I'm going to be available for questions. Um, there's going to be a few items that were identified from the Planning Commission, because they did review this, and, uh, make some recommendations to the Planning Commission. I mean, sorry, to the city council. Hi, Simran, are you, um? We can make Simran hold her talents. There we go.
Hey, good evening. I'm, um, I'm on, I'm just getting situated here. There we go. Good evening, Mayor Potem, um, council members. Um, I'm Simran Mahotra, Principal at Raymond Associates. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, Gabriel. I'll start sharing my screen, so, um, you can walk through this together. Um, so as, uh, as Gabriel just mentioned, the purpose of the, of this project, which is the zoning consistency update, is to, um, prepare new or revised citywide zones on that are consistent with the twenty thirty-five general plan that was adopted in twenty fifteen. Um, and as he just described, part of, uh, the project, uh, was to consolidate and, um, um, incorporate the zones in the Pueblo Veho Strategy Implementation Plan in the zoning code. So what we did was we took the four, uh, zones that were, uh, established in the implementation plan, and as we considered them, we realized that they were very, very similar, which could cause confusion, and there were very few minor differences between the various zones. So we consolidated those into two zones, um, which are now, uh, clearly laid out in both the general plan and, uh, and, and in the, uh, in the zoning code. Um, and as a part of this, we needed to make some changes to the general plan land use map, um, as well as, uh, create, we created a new zoning map so that the two are entirely consistent with each other. Um, there were several, several general plan amendments that had, uh, been approved by the city council in the past a few years, but had not been reflected officially in the map, so we, uh, addressed those cleanup items as well. Uh, and then, uh, we considered the environmental clearance for both changes to the zoning code and the general plan, uh, through this process. And I'll describe that in a little bit more detail on a future slide. So starting with the zoning code, um, currently the city zoning code has thirteen districts. Um, and so, uh, we took the existing districts and we looked at the general plan designations, and we tried to align, uh, align those to, um, one, one-to-one to the extent possible. And, uh, for those that were, uh, that could be lined, uh, aligned cleanly, we reclassified some of them. We renamed some so that they were entirely consistent. And in some cases, um, we made, uh, revisions, minor revisions to some zones, so that those, uh, the standards in the zones aligned with what the intent, um, that was in the general plan, uh, land use designation table. Um, we did need to create four new zoning districts, and, uh, we deleted one existing zone. And then, as I described, we, uh, incorporated the two new zones from the Pueblo Veho Implementation Plan. So in a little bit more detail, there's a zoning district that corresponds to each general plan land use designation, and this table shows how those align. Um, there are six residential-only zones. Um, some of these were existing, some of them were, have been revised or renamed. Um, and then the R O six thousand zone has been merged into the suburban neighborhood. And then the R O six thousand zone has been merged into the suburban neighborhood zone because the densities and the standards within that zone generally fell within within this revised zone that was created. We also created several new mixed use zones that I'll describe briefly in a future slide. Two other new zones that were created were urban employment and resort district. And these line up with the similarly named general plan land use designations as well. And as I, as both Gabriel and I mentioned earlier, the zones are recommended in the Pueblo Viejo Plan have been incorporated as well. The neighborhood commercial zone has been updated and in keeping with the general plan now allows residential uses. And the general commercial zone has some updated uses and the tourist commercial zone has been renamed to regional commercial and it also allows housing. And the three industrial zones are generally the same with some minor tweaks related to uses. And then we created a new open space zone that aligns with the parks and open space general plan land use designation. Now, a little bit more detail about the new zone that have been created. Urban neighborhood and urban employment are both mixed use zones. Urban neighborhood implements the urban neighborhood general plan designation and allows for a range of cities twenty to thirty-eight units per acre. It also allows limited commercial along major art areas in the city. The goal of the urban employment zone is to be focused on providing for jobs, places for jobs to occur, but it also allows high density residential and these densities range from a minimum of thirty units to the acre to a maximum of sixty-five units an acre. And the goal of both these zones is to create mixed use neighborhoods with amenities and jobs for residents in close proximity. And the resort zone is intended to provide zoning for visitor serving uses such as hotels, motels, golf courses, as well as other recreational uses. Low density residential is also permitted. And the open space zone provides development and standards for athletic fields, parks, etc. And the two zones within the downtown area are based on the vision that was provided by the Pueblo Viejo Plan. And these have been incorporated here, there are two zones, one is downtown and the second is downtown transition. The downtown transition is a less intense zone that allows for transition to lower density residential neighborhoods in the surrounding area. The other major highlights of the changes in the zoning code update include adding limits to RV storage in the manufacturing service, heavy industrial and wrecking yard zones. The draft, public draft included a fifteen percent cap in terms of area that could be used up for RV storage. And I'll go into this a little bit later, but based on public comment and comments received from the general, from the planning commission, pardon me, there is a recommended change to the standard. We've also made changes to the lot size requirements in the suburban neighborhood zone. And this is to allow for the maximum density that that is being proposed, so it's going from seventy-two hundred to fifty-four hundred square feet. Another major change is that the current is that based on state law under FP three thirty requires that all housing development is reviewed against objective design standards. And the city currently does not have objective design standards for single family. The city is in the process of preparing those standards for multifamily and mixed use development through another planning process that's ongoing. So we have included those standards in the in the zoning code and these address site planning and building standards. So to ensure adequate building modulation, variation of building materials in addition to the development standards that would typically be included in the zoning code. And then finally, in the Pueblo Viejo Plan, there is a minimum requirement for affordable housing for all new housing projects, which are more than ten units. And this is an implementation of what was in the Pueblo Viejo implement implementation plan and was previously adopted by the city council. So now a quick look at the draft zoning map, this shows this, the revised zoning map is entirely consistent with the with the general plan map. And which I'll show you in in on the next slide. Very briefly, as a part of the zoning effort, we made changes to the general plan document and the general plan land use map. And these were tied to, some of these changes were tied to changes in state laws since the general plan was adopted in twenty fifteen. And the changes are on your slide. We showed the previously adopted general plan amendments. We showed the Vista de la Guas specific plan in both the map and the land use element document. We created a new general plan land use designation for downtown transition and and some other minor cleanup items that were identified by city staff. The land use element in your packet has shows those changes as track changes and red lines, so you can see where those changes were made. And here is the the revised general plan map. It shows those previously adopted downtown transition as well as cleanup items I just mentioned. You can also see the boundaries of the city, the sphere, as well as the general plan planning area on this map. Sequo review. Are one of our team members and consultants prepared a memorandum of the consistency finding for this project with Sequo and that's included in your package as well. And the the memo considered the proposed project, which is the zoning consistency update, as well as the general plan amendments. Again, reviewed it in keeping with the final E I R that was adopted with the with the general plan in twenty fifteen, found that it was entirely consistent with that E I R. So no additional environmental documentation is required. In terms of public review, we held two office hours in May to allow members of the public and interested parties to ask questions. We had several participants attend, we also received over five letters, which I believe are included in your pa- in your packet. There were several recommended changes based on public comment and and for each of these comments, we also have a recommendation made by the planning commission that's on the screen in red. Gabriel, should I walk through all of these now and then we can come back to them one by one? How would you like to do this?
Yeah, let's walk through them and then I think at the end, when we, what the recommendation is presented, we'll need to hear your feedback on how you want to, if you'd like to act on recommendations from the planning commission. Would that work for the council?
Yes. Great. So the first change is for this area along the, along Grapefruit, well, there's this triangular area where Fiftieth Avenue kind of dead ends into this. One of the requests from the property owner was to allow auto oriented uses in this part of the downtown center designation and the downtown Pueblo Viejo Zone. The staff recommendation was to change the zoning to urban employment to better reflect what's already on the site. The planning commission recommended not against staff recommendation and to maintain the downtown center given the desire for creating a pedestrian friendly downtown environment. However, the existing uses on the site include include essentially auto oriented uses, which have been approved over the last several months and years. So there's an inconsistency in terms of what the designation and zoning is and what what's actually built on the on the site. And this was a minor this, this item is related to the three parcels which you can see outlined in in red. The property owners here, these properties in the general plan are designated neighborhood center, which is a mixed use zone, which allows for residential uses over a certain density. It allows for existing single family uses to continue as is and encourages commercial uses. And the draft zoning is consistent with that designation. The property owners request included changing the zoning on these three properties from neighborhood commercial to general neighborhood. General neighborhood is what's behind or to the west of the properties and it's a residential only zone with which allow lower density than what the neighborhood center does. This street allows for, on Van Buren, these properties on Van Buren are intended to create a front, a continuous frontage from Fortieth Avenue down of a commercial frontage all through along that length. And making this change would would disrupt that continuity. And the planning commission was to change the zoning and the staff recommendation is to maintain the current zoning. Or current proposed zoning, I should say. For the general neighborhood zone, there was a request to reduce the front setback requirements for multifamily housing types from ten, from fifteen feet to ten feet to better align with the draft objective design standards. The planning commission and staff both recommend making that change. Another change which was requested by a property owner was to allow for daycare uses, corporate office and regional cooking service uses in urban neighborhood. This would allow for existing uses to continue, continue as is. Both staff and the planning commission recommended amending the code to make this change. Another change that, there were two items that came up for the urban employment zone. The first was related to allowing legacy multi-tenant uses on the property as a right of use and should not making these uses non-conforming. The the recommended change is to allow for existing uses to continue as such, but not to allow new new multi-tenant uses which don't meet the intent of that particular zone. Both staff and planning commission recommended making that change and you can see the new text highlighted or underlined in blue. And the second request here was to allow for towing and impound impound uses as a permitted use in the manufacturing, the M S zone. Staff did not have a recommendation for this issue, the planning commission said recommended to allow these in the urban employment zone, but limit to one percent of the total zone area. Urban employment is a mixed use zone with residential uses and it's in fact the highest density zone that allows the highest densities in the city. And towing is an impound, is not a compatible use, which is why it wasn't permitted in in the draft code in front of you. But the planning commission recommended to allow it as a conditional use, but limit it to a smaller segment of the of the zone.
Simran, if I can add something to that, so the request, so this is regarding properties that are south of Avenue fifty, east of the railroad, and so some of them are light industrial, but there is a towing business there that the manufacturing service zone doesn't allow it and there hasn't been an approval of any kind of conditional use permit for it. The recommended change by the planning commission would provide an avenue for them to receive a conditional use permit on that site if they, if if the city council elects to allow for that there. And so the planning commission recommendation was, okay, allow it, but limited to one percent of the area of that zone. Just give you background.
Thank you, Gabriel. The next change was related to RV storage uses. The, as I mentioned earlier, the zoning code limits RV storage uses in the manufacturing service zone to fifteen percent. A property owner request was to remove that limitation and instead allow staff to decide where, what locations were appropriate for allowing such uses. The recommendations for the, the options for the planning commission, commission was to either keep it at fifteen percent, make it more restrictive and reduce it to ten percent as was was considered by the city council's economic development subcommittee. And the third option was to limit these uses on parcels that do not front major art areas. And the issue with RV storage is that these are not fiscally valuable uses for for the city, so and in this on there, and they don't necessarily generate jobs or sales tax, etc. So the goal was to, in the zoning code, was to limit such uses. And the planning commission recommended that these type of uses be limited to ten percent of the manufacturing service zone. And this map shows where, yes.
Simran, can I add something in in the actual recommendation was for the manufacturing service, the heavy industrial and for the auto wrecking zone? The three zones.
In all three total?
Yes.
Yes. Apologies. This map, to Gabriel's point, this map shows those three zones here, the heavy industrial zone, the manufacturing service zones and the wrecking yard zone. And that's a total of fifteen hundred eighty-one acres. Ten percent of that is hundred and fifty-eight acres and there's already either complete or proposed sixty-two acres in in within those zones, so forty percent of that requirement is already used up. But there is still about ninety-eight acres of land that could be used for such uses. That, those were all the changes that were considered by the planning commission and Gabriel, would you like to discuss what the action in front of the city council today?
Yeah, so that, we recommend approval of the zoning code update, but you'll see it says continued resolution for the general plan amendment. The reason why we're asking for that, the airport land use commission is still reviewing this and they do not want the city council to make a final decision on this until they have that hearing July thirteenth. So what we want to do is continue the general plan amendment approved by resolution to the meeting of July twenty-sixth. But introduce ordinance twelve zero four, which would adopt the Um, but introduce ordinance twelve zero four, which would adopt the the new zoning ordinance amendments, the new zoning map, because this would only be the first reading. It's only considered adopted at the second hearing, which would happen on July twenty-sixth. So it's, it's, it's a little bit different than how we usually would take an item to council. And then lastly, um, there are some um engineering standards and specifications that would need to be um updated in order to comply with the general plan. And so we would just recommend city council, direct staff to uh also update those specifications, so we implement the general plan. Uh, I also want to point one other, a couple other things to you. You did receive a a comment letter today from property owners um that um believe that the the residential estate zone could apply to them if um that are outside city boundaries and potentially could be in the sphere of influence for the city. Um, they felt that this was an opportunity, if that was going to be the case in the future, to ensure that uh their particular uses, which most of them are consistent with residential estate zone, um to ensure that um, you know, their uses wouldn't become non-conforming, right? So there's a letter in front of you. Um, they were recommending certain uses to be uh permitted or conditionally permitted in that zone, such as home occupations, which is allowed, uh farm stands, uh restaurants and nurseries. So just want to make you aware of that letter, and then so if you have any comments on that during um your deliberation, uh happy to answer any questions about that. There is another map that we did update that did not originally include the climbing area of the general plan, and that's the general plan map. So um with your recommendations, we would want to make sure this map is reflected in your motion.
Gabriel, uh just to kick it off, uh you addressed right now the the letter we received uh from, I, you know, I I think about this one because we're going to go to Latco and I'll, you know, the last thing we want is some branch owners there to oppose us, you know, in 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 in, you know, annexing that area. Um, you mentioned home occupation is allowed, what about the rest?
Um, hope home occupation is allowed, and then Simran, if you want to jump in on in me, that's what we were trying to work this out today. Um, farm stand i- isn't permitted currently right now in the county zoning, their underlying county zoning, it is permitted. So temporary farm stands are allowed by right, but you need a uh conditionally used permit for a permanent farm stand. The other one, um restaurants aren't allowed in the county. Um, the the commenter on this, how they described the restaurant, it would be associated with their agricultural uses. So like with like date farm, to do things like um sell like date shakes or sell like food or dates.
Yeah.
Um, so they described that, um, so that's really up to typically a restaurant like a Denny's wouldn't be something that would be permitted in that that zone. Um, but they described something that would be a little bit different associated with the use. And then last is nurseries, nurseries, um Simran, that's consistent with the residential estate zone?
It is, um, growing of field crops, trees, vegetables, fruit, berries, nursery stock, wholesaling is all is permitted.
Okay, so it's really the farm stand and probably the the and restaurant that is not included in the code?
Yeah, if I may add, farm stands aren't regulated by the code currently. Um, it's an incidental use to add production, so it's assumed to be a part of that, but as such would would be permitted.
Okay, yeah, no, I I I.
Restaurants are not, since it's a residential zone.
You got it. I started here just because it wasn't uh digested by the planning commission. Um, but I, you know, I just think thinking longevity, it's, you know, we've been at Latco before. Um, I think we were fortunate that we had a lot of community support, and I want to make sure we continue that because we don't want to have some of these owners in the future to oppose us. Um, also want to make sure that we have a smooth transition to what was allowed by the county into in the city. Um, and so, you know, uh, thank you for looking into that. Um, do you have any uh further questions about a specific one from uh councils? Uh, was to pick up recommendation, I I'm inclined to really take uh account uh the con- conversations that our plan commission has had. Uh, it looks like they did, they just did this quite quite thoroughly and working with all of you, and so, um, but I want to hear from our council colleagues too.
Yeah, I want to go back to, there's, go back a couple of slides. I think there is one um with regards to Avenue forty-eight and the request um or the recommendation of the planning commission, I think maybe a little bit different than that of staff.
Van Buren?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, if we can just get a little bit more uh information as to how that conversation went with the planning commission, what were their thoughts, their concerns? Um, I think there was a mention of three properties um that would have to, that there would be a zone change for them. So if we can just get a little bit more info on that.
Yeah, so we're showing on the screen are the three properties, um, you know, the the owners of the properties right here, as well as the representative um uh Luis Lopez. And uh so they did present their case before the planning commission. Um, they identified that they have residential uses on their sites. Um, you know, we did estat- uh establish some language in the code that would allow those uses to continue, but there is one property that does not have a home, it's vacant, and so that would prohibit them from constructing a home uh in the future, and really the intended uses are multifamily and and commercial. So the the planning commission was supportive of their request. Um, staff doesn't have any major objections to it, it's just, um, you know, the exercise for us wasn't to like allow people to choose their zoning. Um, but you know, if if the city council supported it, um, staff does not have any major objections to it.
Thanks, Gabriel.
That's the zone right now, so that's the light and shade purple neighborhood center, right?
Y- yes.
Right, they're zoning right now, but they would want to go to the gold urban neighborhood?
Correct.
Okay.
No, they wouldn't go to the, they would go to the li- lighter um.
The general neighborhood, the the tan color.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, the tan.
So under that, so going, moving over to that one, to the general, sorry, my iPad turned off already. Um, what would that zoning allow them to do then?
It would allow them to do uh multi-family uses.
Multi-family, okay.
Um, yes, and including single families, so just lower density.
Yeah, and and it's that's just a specific, uh, we would just change that specific three blocks.
That correct.
Yeah, I I I'm inclined in 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 supporting uh the planning commission recommendation on this item. And since there's no major objection.
From staff.
Hmm, question, what would happen? Uh, I know that that corner, the corner lot is supposed to be multi- uh like apartments, right, so there, the for.
Um, up and Avenue forty-eight.
Yeah, that's, that would say the, that that makes sense for the neighborhood center. Because of those type of houses there, right?
Right. So that that could, that that still could move forward.
We're just talking about what is on red?
Just in the red dash lines, those are.
They would impact the rest.
I just, you know, want to make sure that the other property owners in the new future, what's, you know, the precedents that you set when you change it for, what would be that process? Say they wanted, they'd have to come through the planning commission and go through that whole process, right?
Yeah, if they want to change, change their zone, uses again in the future, they'd have to come back again. Um, so we we thought allowed for a lot of flexibility, but uh, you know, to do commercial in the future, but if they're not interested in that, they'd like to keep it as residential.
Uh, and the rest, were there any that you were contrary to that the plan commission in the in the in the city council or, I mean, the staff were on on contrary?
Uh, but though, I mean, the plan commission supported a restriction on on um RV and mini storage, we're okay with that. The reason why we're okay with that is that we are getting, most of our requests in the industrial zones are for RV and mini storage, so it's kind of like the high kind of use that being proposed. Um, Indio has moratorium on RV and mini storage. Um, and so they're trying to identify what kind of restrictions they would have on those types of uses. You know, once we reach that maybe ten percent cap, you know, we could consider lifting that if we, if the planning commission and city council wants to in the future. So it's not banning it, but it's actually creating just a restriction
Yeah.
to make sure that we don't lose all of our industrial zone just to that use.
Well, around what percentage are we at now?
Um, I have to go back to the slide.
Uh, we are at um about forty percent of that um ten.
Forty percent of the ten percent?
Still about a hundred acres, you have, you have ninety-eight acres that can be used for new RV or mini storage.
Right.
Okay.
Good. Um, the other one was the towing, so the planning commission was supportive of allowing uh one percent of the urban employment zone, which is a lot of that area would be the area east of the uh railroad, and it would be some areas along Avenue fifty-four. Um, the planning commission was supportive of that. Uh, we do have a little bit, some concerns about it, just because, you know, you're going to have uh housing and office uses. So it's just, you know, a matter of compatibility, is it, is a towing yard compatible with those other uses that would be allowed?
Are there towing yards there now?
There is one um now, but it's not permitted under the underlying zone, so um it's, 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 it's there without any approvals from the city.
It's on fifty, wh- which, where is that one located on?
Um, that one's located, this would actually be located to the north of the Hidden Harvest Building that we talked about earlier. So actually, two properties north. Uh, so the planning commission was supportive of trying to accommodate that use, so that there was a path for it to be allowed in the city.
Do you have the map?
Not on, not on this this presentation.
We can potentially zoom in on.
Okay.
May not be. And may not be zoomed in enough.
Great, right?
So, so it it exists there, it it's functioning, you said it's not permitted by the city, but it's within sound city boundaries, h- how we process it.
So if the city council took an action to allow for that one percent allowance in total area of that zone, then they could apply for a conditionally used permit to get approval from the planning commission to exist there and continue to operate.
That Peter Rabbit Trail, right, Lane?
Peter Rabbit Lane, correct.
So is it, I was asking for the map, is it visible to Grateful Boulevard?
It's, yeah.
Let me give us a. A different map.
Okay.
Well, she's doing that, and and I, I know you guys covered it, Gabriel, but for the downtown, where um it doesn't align with the general plan, um, what are we doing to, are we accommodating it, what are we doing?
Yeah, so the plan recommended four zones, we're like, that's too complicated, let's consolidate into two, into two zones. Um, and so what it establishes is the downtown um center zone and the downtown transition zone. So the downtown transition is intended to be less intensive than the downtown um center zone. And that would be areas that would be around Veterans Park, and it would kind of follow the outline that was established in the probably be a whole revitalization plan.
Okay.
The mayor, I know we do have some speaker cards, so at some point we should.
Okay. But uh, um, well, as soon as we have, let let's, so we don't lose track, and we don't that, let's finish this, this thought, and then we'll move forward to speaker cards in 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 the community comments. You're, you're showing us the the towing area, right?
Yeah, so this is the, the keel is the urban employment zone. Um, and the the towing yard, I believe, is around here, if you can see my cursor.
Good, uh, so so Gabriel, say, say we 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 side with staff on this, uh, what's, what, 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 what do these tow- folks that own this towing company need to do?
The only allowed area currently is the auto wrecking zone, so they would have to uh find a location there. That's the only place where it's allowed today.
Well, why does it exist right now, it's not allowed? How how do, how do we, how do we get there, that sort of?
I I don't know how I got there, um, it's, it's been there since, since I started with the city, so um.
Do you know when it started there?
I I don't know, I I I believe maybe a representative from from the towing uh business is here, and I could speak to that.
Oh, okay, I would, I would um be open to hearing what they have to say about.
Well, let's start, uh, Delia, have some, 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 um, so speaker cards in, uh, or we'll start there.
I think.
Is it, is, is it the one behind, if you look, is the one that's right here, that area on this side?
On the other.
It's on the other side, right, I just wanted to look at the rear.
Here. It's but, but the toy? Okay, I I don't want to follow, well, well.
Oh, wait for her.
Yeah, let's, let's um, let's move forward with the cards.
Okay, so we'll start with uh the first guest speaker, it's Luis Lopez, and he's here in favor of uh this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the city council, it's a pleasure to be here and to see all your familiar faces. Uh, my name is Luis Lopez, I'm attorney for Mr. Javier Solis, who owns a single family home on one point three acres at forty-eight six sixty-five Van Buren Street. Uh, I I also represent the interests of his neighbor, Jerry Jimenez, who owns a one acre parcel behind his property and Mr. Carlos Alvarez and their family, who own a wholesale nursery. Uh, it's a one, it's a two point three acre property north of my client's property. We signed a petition initially, and we presented in front of the planning commission to keep a multi-family residential zoning. And our belief was that that zoning is still consistent with the neighborhood center because of these other projects that the city had previously approved, like the Coachella Village uh Apartments project, which has the same character. It has a two-story uh building mass at the street, so you get a continuous appearance of a mixed use. The the form and character would not be jeopardized. Uh, and then the, the seventeen acre P U D behind the Tower Market and the Borrego Springs Clinic, I mean, that was done with a base district of multifamily residential, and that's a small lot, single family P U D. So, the administrative practice of the city up until today has been that the R M is an allowable or a consistent base district for the neighborhood center. Now, with the revamp of the whole zoning ordinance, I think it might change that. So the planning commission recommendation was to amend the general plan for these three parcels uh to R M or general neighborhood, and then, and then adjust the zoning map. Um, because you're continuing the general plan amendment, then uh I don't know that that this question is going to be answered tonight, but maybe if the staff can be given some direction on how to finalize that general plan amendment, so that the the general neighborhood zoning is now consistent with the general plan map, that that would be the the client's uh preference tonight. And they're here to speak on their particular uh story behind the properties and and what their vision was all along, because they've owned these properties for over twenty years. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Okay, and we, next is Jerry Jimenez.
Air Protem Council staff, uh Jerry Jimenez, uh longtime uh resident, uh lifelong resident of City Coachella. I've had an interest in that property for about twenty-seven years. Uh, I bought it a long time ago, because eventually I wanted to build a house on it. Uh, I recently retired from the city of Coachella, that's my plan. Um, I've had long-term roots here, uh, as it was said before, my cousin owns the property uh right up front, he has a house there, and that's my dream. And in buying it twenty-seven years ago, I never thought things would change. Uh, but they have, but that's why we're here, uh requesting that we go to uh general um residential. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next, we have Javier Solis.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. Uh, I've lived in Coachella since nineteen sixty-seven, born and raised, left for four years to the military, came back. My, I'm a third generation Coachella resident. Uh, went to almost every school in Coachella, Peter Pendleton, Date Palm, lived in the community homes, lived on Avenue fifty-two. I grew up, it's where I've always belonged, it's where I planned to stay, it's where I raised uh my family. It's where I found a unique and great opportunity to buy the property next to my cousin, who is like my brother.
I see resembles.
Yeah. Don't even, the better looking guy, I wouldn't even see. Long story short, uh. Just like him, in two thousand and nine, when I saw the tremendous opportunity. To be able to. Stay in Coachella. I did so, conducting my due diligence on the zoning. At that particular time, it was zoned agricultural transitional. With my plan of putting a, a date field, you know, a few day palm trees in front. Uh, as I moved towards that in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, I'm not too sure which year. Uh, I now find out that back then, it changed and I lost the A T zoning. Now here we are, moving forward, I finally. Get funding to build casitas for my boys, uh. My oldest is thirty three, he's been in the US Air Force for nine years. Uh, and he plans on doing a career and coming back to Coachella. Uh, my middle boy lives here in Coachella. My youngest boy is a lifelong Coachella resident. But could not find a place to rent in Coachella because of the high costs of rentals. Uh, he is paying twenty two hundred dollars a month in Bermuda Dunes for a little two bedroom, eight hundred square foot apartment. So as I move forward, uh, only a month and a half, two months ago, less than two months ago. To go and inquire about permits. And lo and behold, I'm told, no, we can't give you a permit, we're in the process of rezoning you. Very shocked. No community outreach that I know of, no notification, no letter, no communication. Uh. And so I'm a little dismayed when I see in their, in their report that they had uh. Community outreach, that they had uh these uh virtual sessions, because. Neither myself or any of the residents that I've spoken to in that immediate area. Knew anything about this, I only found out because I decided to go in and inquire about permits, hey. Outside of that, again. The dream and the goal is to build and leave a legacy for my sons to remain in Coachella, not to move to other places. You know, uh, I appreciate all the hard work, I used to be. The chair of the planning commission with my co-chair Stephanie Viedican back in the day, um. I understand the, the work at hand and the difficult decisions everyone has, but. The appreciation comes with everyone involved to keep an open mind on. What residences that have been here their entire lives. Uh, you know, we mark, we, we mark those dreams, we mark those goals, we, we set them, we, we worked towards them very, very diligently. Uh, only to kind of run into these uh, these, these uh, these hurdles. Uh, but again, uh, that's just my little piece, you know, uh, again, my cousin Jerry, who is. My neighboring property owner is, is like a brother to me and he has the same dream I have, uh. Thank you for keeping everything uh in consideration and um. Your times appreciate, thank you.
Next is James Kirk.
So, Vice President statewide towing. Uh, thirty seven years in business, third generational uh tow, own tow companies out here. We came to Coachella because about three and a half years ago, we were asked to by Officer Gutierrez, which was the C H P Highway Patrol Officer. So there's a lack of service, um, we have Banning Yard, Riverside, Colton, Fontana, South of Barstow. Uh, multiple uh yards, um. We chose Coachella, um, because of uh the zoning where we're at, we got R S O. We got uh C H P. And um, fits in, we have the County of Riverside Bateman contract, a whole bunch of city contracts. So I went in, they gave me a business license, they set fire out, they sent, uh. You know, the police already came out, cause we have their contracts. Uh, they sent everyone out and we've been good for three and a half years now, and then um, we rent the yard from Paul. And uh, she says, oh, they're trying to rezone it, change it, so we're just kind of. You know, sitting there trying to make something work here, because we moved over two plus million dollars of uh equipment out here to service the city. We're the only one that tow motorhomes for R S O. Uh, cause there are lots of money, every time you tow on, you lose three grand, don't want to touch them, no one has the equipment, so. Uh, I believe we do help the community in many ways, uh, so. We're just trying to figure out how to get passes without shutting our uh company down, you know. As we're operational, so.
Is the roadside towing tour, just the C H P?
We just do, we, we do, uh, we do, we like do, we do no triple A, but we do, uh. Mostly uh contracted services, UPS, FedEx, um, all C H P, uh. We do R S O, uh, Sunline Bus Company out here, we have a contract with them, Bertec. Uh, so a lot of commercial and um. Dollars are a problem with semis flipping, crashing, not clearing the roadways in a timely manner, you know. People, it's a, it's a main vein getting out of California here, two lane highway, especially when you start getting on Chrocko Summit here. And uh, we have a hazmat company as well, we service this area, actually doing right now, we're Kelly within uh County of Environmental Health. So we have quite a bit of uh operations we do here and uh, we're the only hazmat company, I believe, anywhere near uh. This area, I mean, there's nowhere near here until Ontario, we're the only one that services area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Paula Turner.
Hi, um, my name is Paula Turner and um I'm um with Desert Pacific Properties. I've been a commercial broker, um, marketing the city of Coachella for over thirty five years and also a property owner. Um, I wanted to address a couple of the items on the planning commission, I am in support of the staff in the planning commission. Uh, recommending to amend to allow commercial day use services in the urban neighborhood zone. Um, I am one of the owners of the daycare facility at five one nine nine six Tyler. Which is at the corner of Tyler and Avenue fifty two. Um, it's been a daycare facility now for over forty years. And we currently are working with um our latest tenant, which is Renew Hope, to reopen the daycare facility. Um, I'm also in support to allow the ten percent of the M S zone for storage facilities, there's a huge need for storage in R Vs. Facilities since um a lot of the communities um do not allow R Vs in their um neighborhoods. Which one is mine for sure. Um, but most important is the, the request to allow legacy units, u- uses in the urban employment zone. Um, I am the owner of eight five two two O Avenue fifty, which is where Stateide is located. And um, I've been the owner there for over thirty years. Uh, I am in support of the staff in the planning commission's recommendations to add. The following language to the new urban zone. Which states such uses in existence and permitted at the time. And permitted is the most important part of this. Um, a- at the time of adoption shall be permitted to continue as a permitted use without obtaining a C U P. Although staff did not support towing impound uses, I am in support of the planning commission's recommendation. To allow one percent of the zone to allow the tow yards. In regards to our tenants statewide, I do believe they are a permitted use. When statewide moved in, we had two other tow businesses, Extreme Towing and Budge Towing. Um, as well as over the years, many, many other tow yard, tow companies over the years, um. And all of the tow companies are required um to get their necessary permits to be permitted by a city. Um, when you apply for a business license at the city. There's an application that is circulated to the building department, the uh planning department, the fire department. And um, police, and I have the application here. Where it shows that before you get issued this permit, you have to check off these permits. Um, based on the fact that state statewide currently has a business license, I believe, um. Statewide should be deemed a permitted use and not be subject to obtaining. Um, any C U Ps if you do pass the uh towing yard allowance. The M S C zone allows outside storage uses, and I believe over the last thirty years. That we've owned the property, the planning department considered a tow yard company to be an outside storage use. And permitted all of our towing companies, now the, the city is tightening up with this new zone. Um, e- even though we're next to the railroad tracks, um zoning ordinance to not allow. The um, the tow yards in the new um so urban zone. I would, I wouldn't like to, I would not like to live statewide as a tenant, I think they um are good for the city, they're good for the community. And um, my recommendation to the council would be one. Allow um the one percent of the M S zone for tow yards. And two, any business with a Coachella business license be considered a permitted business. So that statewide could be considered a permitted use and stay at the facility, thank you for your consideration. And if you need the business license application, I have a copy of that too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Gabriel, um. The towing uh company, are, are these ones on oats or on Peter Rabbit?
Peter Rabbit Lane, south of Avenue fifty.
Okay, and then the other ones that were on oats or? Are they no longer, it's just, they mentioned there was two others around? Are they still around? Okay.
I think there's one on fifty four.
Yeah, that's, that's A B C towing.
Uh, no, there's another one over there, right? Oh, huh, boys.
Okay, good, but, but for, for the, for this one here on, on Avenue fifty where we're talking it. Um, so how do they get, so, 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 how, how do they get the, the business permit? And all the license and all, but, but you're telling us that, that they shouldn't have. How are we here?
Yeah, uh, I'm not sure this all happened before I was here, but. Kind of what happens is a business license is applied for in finance department. What's supposed to happen is supposed to be circulated through building, through planning. Uh, I don't, I don't know if it was circulated through, through planning, I wasn't here at the time that this business license issued. Um, so, you know, i- if maybe it was issued without any kind of planning approval. Um, that's happened before too, right? So a business license doesn't necessarily mean you have your zoning approvals from the city.
But, but we should give a business license equivalent to this loan.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Well, how, how would we, how, how would this be? Did, 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 and I'll go through the proper routes, today if someone came and wanted opening up a towing company in an area that's not. Uh, zone for towing. Uh, what, what, what happens to, to prevent that from happening?
Yeah, as long as the business license is circulated to, to planning and building, we review it in development services, right?
And then you would deny it.
And then there would be denied, yes.
So that didn't happen?
I, I'm, I'm speculating, maybe that didn't happen.
Okay.
Gabriel, what is the date on the license, when was it issued?
I, I don't know, but. Okay.
They won't even operating for a little bit more than three years? And then you've owned the land for how many years? And then I, I'm thinking that you guys partnered up so that you can start. Okay.
So I just, uh, you know, I, I just. Kind of lost, I'm trying to figure out what to do here, since, you know, you have a whole operation going three and a half years later and I'm. Saying it could be potentially shut down, so, kind of a.
So to the owner, previously you had three tenants and there was three wrecking yard companies there, um.
So at the time that he was there, it came in, I had two, I had Budge Towing and Extreme. And they also had business licenses, I believe, in order to get the contracts with the government, you have to have. A business license, so they all had to go through, and I think, just not speculating, but I believe. That um it does not say in the M S zone, no tow yards, but it allows outside storage uses. And if you read the definition of an outside storage use. Um, vehicles, machinery, everything is considered, and it's just a tow yard is storing vehicles outside. So I think it just was, oh, we were, we always thought that we could allow tow yards, we've had. I'm guessing over the thirty years, at least six tow yards in our facility in the M S zone. And I just think that in the past, it was considered, a tow yard was considered an outside storage use and it was permitted.
When you purchased the land before, was it zone, the same thing that it is now?
Yes.
It's been, I think it's been M S for a long time, manufacturing service.
So, so I know one of the, the ranches, I think it's on, what is that, fifty, Avenue fifty is close by. I know that they store um semi trucks there. And so they were told they couldn't, you know, store trucks there, and so. I, I understand, you know, and clearly it was um. A failure, you know, that it wasn't picked up at the time, because you're now going through. Three towing companies, which means that three of them got the licenses, so it was one after another, this isn't the first time. It was just that this is the first time that we're um changing the zoning to match the general plan. And so we're just making sure everybody's obviously following what the general plan has or what it allows. My only, my concern in, is that. I don't want to get later, someone saying that they can't do something. And then, you know, going back to, you know, why weren't we included in the zone, and then having, you know, these types of um. You know, they, they want to basically for us to accommodate that plan. But in this situation, there's been not one, but three licenses were cleared. And so I can understand why you would continue to move forward with getting tenants, um. You know, but the, back to Gabriel is, you know, should. And would you be supportive of allowing towing in this area? Um, and then keep in mind that it is visible to Grapefruit Boulevard, and we have a lot of plans in that area. As well as how it should be built out, you know, so what are your thoughts on that?
I don't have a major objection to it, I just wanted to make sure there is a, a path that they can get their approval. So right now, we don't know if it's stored on site, if the surface is paved and, you know, do we have. Things leaking from cars that are leaking into the soil, all of that, if it went through a C U P process, we would be determining that. You know, that there's proper parking, proper paving, landscaping on site, none of that exists today.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that, you know, if we, I do support it, simply because there has been three. So it's been three times that it's been issued, uh, that's one too many times. But I do want to make sure that we're, um, as far as like visibility from grapefruit, that we are putting some landscaping. So that we are covering that, um, cause to be honest, I, I don't want to see the point competition for a grapefruit ballpark. But there are obviously options to be able to, you know, make sure that it looks um appealing. Um, and so, uh, my concern too is that, you know, once you come through with the C U P, you have, you know, your conditions on there. Is that, we hope that, you know, you'll be able to comply with those as well. Uh, considering that, at least I am supportive of allowing the towing usage there.
Can, can I speak?
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, my, my, my recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, my 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 recommendation is, um, what is being proposed is anybody that is currently permitted. Um, in the use that is not allowed, um, that that they could continue. Operating, and so all of my other tenants are allowed to operate there except. Um, statewide, and I just would like to stay in the um. Um, or in the motion that anybody that has a current business license is considered a permitted use. So that he can also continue operating like my other tenants that have been there.
Or for towing?
Or any type of use that's permitted.
Oh, because it's MS.
And and in my mind, if you got a business license, you're permitted.
I think my concern with that is when you're allowing that many tenants that we're now operating as a commercial zone and not just. A towing company. What are your thoughts on that?
I, so I would, I would not agree to that. I don't know how many business licenses have been issued. Um, to businesses that haven't gone through planning, and so I I just would not agree with that. I think it makes sense if the city council wanted to support the use, if they go through a CUP process, we see the site improve. Uh, up to the standards of the city.
I'm just gonna point out, you cannot see their space on eighty-six. What you can see is the other packing, there's a big lot in front of the railroad track, so you don't see any of their stuff. There's some expense. Um, and so you cannot see them at all. If you scroll and turn around, that's the other side. I I don't know who owns that, but that's not them, right? They're on the other side of that, with that. The over, you know, canopy looking.
Yeah, that's facing grapefruit, so they're on the other side of the railroad.
Yeah, and even then, inside there all fenced in, he has all the mesh already set up, so it's the the, there's no. Like, oh, I can see into a wrecking yard or like a tow truck.
Okay, um, I think uh, uh, the 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 plan commission recommendation, would it. Um, assist in in uh, uh, our goals to maybe further prohibit more towing companies come. I I mean, I think, uh, obviously with the percentage that is, to work with the current existing ones, but for the future. Not to further expand, or does it still allow for more to come?
But you're you're gonna limit, you're gonna be limited to one percent of that whole area out there, right? East of the railroad, so it's gonna be very limited. So on the flip side to this is that you you would be potentially allowing for a use that. It's a very scarce use, right? So someone may not want to let that go in the future, right? So. Um, so it's just something to think about, um, not opposed to that, but uh, but you know, I think that's something the council should should consider.
Yeah, I think in in the meantime, to be able to work with. Um, you know, the current existing business and uh, employees that exist there, uh. Um, you know, and and it's not visible, maybe uh, we can work with them and and making sure that we get all the proper. Um, permits ensuring that um, we do, you know, now we can go back and. Um, you know, ensuring that all the comments you mentioned, we go back there and work with them on getting in. Um, ensuring that, you know, future, whether it's it's him or 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 future or business that that is there. Um, is aware of, you know, uh, we just bought that, you know, that that harvest, hidden harvest, and so there's, you know, goals to expand. This, you know, and just down the street from there, so. Um, I, I I I I'm 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 comfortable. With the, if if you don't have a major objection, there's not major objection from city staff, I'm comfortable with the. The planning commission recommendation on this one as well.
So for towing companies, they are going out, many are going out of business, and I think that you're able to continue because. RSO and CHP uh, use your company, um, and so I think that helps, but I do know the towing companies are. They're struggling business, they're going out of business, many of them. Or back to, now I'm the the next um, uh, area, so when we're looking at um.
Should should we just clear on this side of the council that?
Yeah.
Okay, we could start.
So.
Um, that that we can start getting direction from council, so we know how to.
Okay, and this time I like, where is there consensus about respecting plan commission recommendation or?
I just have one quick uh clarification, so you would recommend that they go through CUP then? Okay, that's it, just wanted to make sure.
That's that's what we do with auto wrecking zone, so auto wrecking zone allows it.
Good.
Okay, got it, thank you.
To get direction that we know where, so we know what council is.
Okay.
Awesome.
I'm good with that.
There's consensus of uh, planning mission and ensuring that uh, we go to a CUP. To ensure that they're up to code.
But that's our process, it just wasn't done before, but so back to um. To them here, and I'm trying to understand, so when, the same thing, when you purchase the land, what year did you purchase the land? To Javier. So it was. And was it, Gabriel, was it zoned differently from when he purchased the land from when we did the general plan update in two thousand fifteen?
Yes, had a different.
In two thousand nine, it was, it was AT agricultural transitional. Which allowed, which allowed for for residential use along with agricultural. Uh, or basically crop fields, dates or anything. And again, when I purchased it, it had an existing home. Uh, that uh, and we, we bought the entire property, it's an acre and a half. The home is situated to the very back end of that acre and a half. So I have about a slightly over an acre of frontage that the original intent was to. Start uh, a small date farm, uh, organic date farm, uh, that fell through. Uh, as, well, it didn't fall through, I delayed it. And when I went to do something back around twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, is when I found out that. So something changed, and I no longer had the agricultural transitional zoning, now it was. Resident residential. Transition or something to the residential.
The, yeah, so the general plan went to the neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood.
Yeah.
So when, when, if he's considering like a um, some type of agriculture, would that be considered somewhat commercial besides the sales there? No?
Not anymore, so I had to scrap that, I had to scrap that plan.
When, when we did the transition, we updated the general plan. Um, did you, so you didn't get any notifications at that time?
Not much, no, I only found out about that with this last month and a half process, which in exact. There was no notifications, uh, I, I, again, I found out only because I went into the permit center to start inquiring about fully. A permit for the ADUs.
Louis, you're in Tom in twenty fifteen?
To clarify this, council, I I was here in two thousand thirteen when the general plan was being worked on, I was not here in two thousand fifteen when everything was. Solidified, but we did send out notices to all property owners in the entire city about this. So this zoning code update is is informed by that process of the general plan, so we're just implementing the general plan.
Yeah.
The but this this should be just a simple implementation.
To 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 focus on today, they're 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 asking, they're not asking to go back to ET, they're asking for a general neighborhood. I don't want to get confused, they're they're just, they're 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 ask, they're not asking to go back. Pre two thousand fifteen, they're asking for a general neighborhood, and we we did, we did sort of a pick this up, pick this before the other one. I I thought we were consensus.
Yeah.
But um.
I just, I I do like to know the history so that I'm understanding, and also so that as a city that we improve moving forward, it's really important to identify. You know, some of these issues, um, but I do remember, Louis, didn't we change the zoning from where the um hotel in Digo is? And then to the other side of Rancho Mirage, didn't we, didn't we swap those? Um, wasn't that currently residential on Avenue? Forty-eight, where Hotel Digo is, am I wrong in that?
There was a change of zone for the Coachella Village project. That's in the neighborhood center, for the three hundred and forty-two apartments.
Yeah.
This whole idea of the neighborhood center started with Dr. Acosta's uh clinic. And and at the time, Eduardo Garcia was advocating that we can do something proactive for the doctor. Uh, and this was before the general plan. So we we start, I I think we started that project, and then with the general plan update in two thousand fifteen, we said, well, why don't we just continue it down to? Forty-ninth, so you'll have a continuous uh, street block base of mixed use. Um, what what my clients are asking basically is to to stay general neighborhood because of the unique. Configuration of their parcels, uh, if somebody wanted to do mixed use, they can't do it on Jerry's Lot, he's one acre behind. Uh, Javier's Lot, they would have to buy all three parcels to really do a good mixed use project. And then at the corner of forty-ninth and Van Buren, you're gonna have about. Five to six acres of neighborhood commercial and then the three parcels, so. You really want the commercial on the corner, and and when Avenue forty-nine goes through. It'll be a hard corner, and that's where the neighborhood commercial needs to be.
Well, I think we did add it to the corner, right?
Yes, forty-eight, it's in there, it's in there now, correct?
So, I I mean, I I'm. I'm open, you know, to allowing it, but I am also. Concerned as we start tightening up, you know, what we have in the general plan, is who else is gonna come forward when they're no longer in compliance? And that's gonna be, that's gonna be tough, and it's gonna come down to whether, you know, we're gonna allow these type of usages, even though. They're not in compliance with the general plan, and I am concerned about that, and as a development team, you know, you guys are gonna have to be. Prepared to get some of those, um, you know, questions and people are gonna be upset. And so I am concerned about how many people are are gonna be impacted and how we're gonna deal with them moving forward. And how lenient we can be to the point where we're not really following the general plan anymore. And so, um, with that being said, um, I think as as a city, we we know where some of those um. Failures were, uh, but then also is that we have to keep in mind, and you guys have to keep in mind that. You know, we also even as uh, landowners, you know, we need to be keeping up. Also with what the zoning is because they do change, you know, they do change, and so I do ask. Um, that moving forward, that you're also understanding and, you know, looking at what it's going for and that you're, you know, using the proper. Permits and usages.
I I uh, I I think we we had the uh, so consensus uh. To, are we consensus to allow for the records, uh, planning mission recommendation to uh. Allow those three lots to uh, stay as a general uh, neighborhood? Is that the consensus of the council?
Sim, Simran.
Say something.
The.
Simran, I think. I'm gonna make a suggestion. Yeah, I was gonna make a suggestion that if the council um would like to maintain the neighborhood center. Zone, uh, then we could permit a single home on a lot. Doesn't matter what the size is as an, as a standalone use, because in the neighborhood center right now. You can't build a new, if approved, as is, without this change, you can't build a single home. Um, you can build multi-family at a certain density, but you can't build a single home. Uh, the change which um was made was for existing single family homes to continue as permitted, but no new homes were, would be allowed. So we could make, allow a single. Residential units to be built to um. To accommodate cases such as this, but if somebody in the future does take. Um, is able to acquire all three properties, they have the option of building neighborhood center, which is mixed use. Uh, and meet the intent of the general plan.
Yes, thank you so much, Simran, I think the request that was was is not only about one or single home, there there was a request to buy. Um, and then, you know, uh, Mr. Solis talked about multiple units within uh, the the lot, and so. I think that those would be restrictive to that, uh, under the general neighborhood that they're, that that they're asking for those three lots would allow. Such and I, you know, I I I think I I still remain comfortable on this side and two, since there's not a lot of a big objection from our council. And planning commission also went through it too, uh, to remain, uh, specifically those three lots, uh, as as a general neighborhood.
Would the single house allow for um, casita and for ADUs on it?
Yes.
So that can also be applied, right? Looking at the single house. I I do, and in Louis' consensus, when I was on planning commission, I did like to be very fair. And it it concerns me when we're only doing it to certain parcels and not allowing the neighbors, so it it does, it does concern me. But uh, having said that, if, you know, Gabriel, if you would be open to that, you know, we have to keep in mind that a single. Us, a single home does allow for, for AD, for a casita, an AD, I don't know how many, the three now?
Oh.
You can do uh. ADU and a junior ADU and um, the main unit.
Yeah, do a lot split under SP nine.
So what, what do you think?
Um, SP nine wouldn't apply to this property.
SP nine wouldn't.
Oh, that's right, this neighborhood commercial, it would be considered.
So it doesn't allow for it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know only applies to single family zone.
So, so that's, that's an alternative, I know the request was general neighborhood, so, you know, if the. And I'm not sure if if it's a, the um. The 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 owners have a opinion on that, but.
Yeah.
Considering that I think that it because it has to be single family zoned. And that the ADUs don't apply to it, or they can't, then they would be out of compliance once again.
Uh, like, if you allow a single family uh, unit, it is. Can be allowed along with that, along with that single family use.
Okay, so you can allow.
Yeah, so as long as.
Yeah, but we just can't do the lot split for SP nine.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Simran, um, one of the opinions of the council, I I I I remain. Sort of picked on it a while ago, went back to it, um, but uh. I remain comfortable with uh, uh, the planning commission recommendation to maintain as a a general neighborhood. Uh, Councilmember Dr. Furo?
Were you gonna say something, gave clarify something or?
Oh, yeah, I don't know if there was consensus around that, but it sounds like every other planning commission recommendation, there probably is consensus, so we could probably say. You know, council is agreeable across the board with the planning recommendations and the slides that were presented to you.
Yeah, let us, yeah, we went over, we just finished that, the towing, let, now, I'm I'm gonna go around and ask the council, see how they are. On this one, so Dr. Furo?
And you know, I agree with Councilwoman Delgado on the fairness component, because I don't want to be fair to everybody, but Gabe did answer that question for me on the sense that. If their neighbor does want to get zone change, they can go through the process, it's not like we're, we're stopping anybody, right? Game, they they can go and and make their case to the planning commission and go through that, because I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, it's fair. Um, because I don't want, you know, them to come tomorrow to your office and say, well, Mr. Solis got this, you know. Why can't I do that? Why, why didn't, you know, and they were informed the the information went out, but I just want to make sure that it's, it's on the record that you can go in. And get, go through this process, you just have to request, I think that's just uh. That people understand what's gonna be that process and and is your office gonna be ready for what might happen, like the domino effect? Like of the, oh, now we're gonna go and I want to, you know. Change zone and apply, and of course, you you have the right to deny, and the planning commission has to, you know, the process and due process, but. You know, is your office gonna be ready for like the consequences that come after? Uh, so just so that you can prepare and and not get, you know, uh, blindsided or face any. Any like stronghold issues in any sense like that, that's just my my, where I come from, I'm not opposed to. To their, to their zone request, because I do, you know, they made their case of what they want, and and for what reason, because we want to make sure. Yes.
If I may, uh. To reflect back on the highlighted areas. Of that entire corridor, were three s- small parcels.
Yeah, there's.
Very small, all the other parcels are five acres plus, um, and I, I believe that's kind of what. Has us in this unique situation, then we're very, individually, we're three parcels side by side, but individually. We're small footprints.
Mm-hmm.
Then. Really can't even commercialize anything.
Mm-hmm.
So that's really the drive of wanting to stay. Neighborhood residential.
And then the the next one, big one is like a big um, a date farm.
Uh, date farms, uh, probably a total of ten acres that kind of splits the forty-nine alignment.
Yeah.
Um. Between that or which would be what he, what he.
between that or which would be what he would he uh described as the corner of forty nine and Amburin uh consists of probably two and a half acres of uh of that date farm and then another five acre parcel before our three little parcels start. You know, so it's really, it's the uniqueness of the fact that percent, well, my my property per se, very small footprint. Um, road frontage is only a hundred and thirty feet. It's it's slightly less than an acre that that's that's open right now. So it's really not don't, we don't have the ability to commercialize if I really don't want it to happen, but if this would be forced down our neck, I can't do any commercial on that property. There's nothing that can be done. Low density is why I bought it because of the casitas, you know, the the ADUs, the building, building small stuff with correct me if I'm wrong, but this new zoning would be a minimum density of five units plus or more or something like that. Uh, at least that's, I think that's what I read, but there's there's no way, you know.
Part part of the challenge is that the general plan amendment, we would like to write on the coattails of the city action because under state law, we can't down downzone property now unless we make it up somewhere else. So with the surplus that the city is getting of three hundred and twenty five units with the citywide general plan amendment, we need a reduction of seventy five dwelling units to go to the general neighborhood. Uh, so if if the general plan amendment is gonna be recommended by the city council, we need to do it as part of this action, not a separate development application. That that was the other challenge.
Thanks. Thank you for clarifying that. But yeah, those are my comments.
Uh, Stephanie, Councilmember.
I'm good with this with going with uh the planning commission's recommendation. And I don't, I don't see that staff as too opposed to, you know, I mean, you would tell us, you always do. So I'm I'm good with planning commission.
Uh, council member Delgado?
Um, I think I've already let them know that I I was supportive of it, you know, we've identified some of the issues we both.
Yeah, everyone had talked that, I'm just being respectful, going back to everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, uh, all right. So we have consensus.
We have, we do have the the letter now is that I'm also open to allowing the uh accessory uses um for the farm stand, the only way you can get it anyways is through a CUP. So it isn't permanent. Um, it has to go to the CUP process, which I think is fair. And then also from the restaurant, I I think that the person who's emailing um the restaurant, that maybe really understand when we're talking about restaurant, you know, we have obviously waiters and um what they're, what they're wanting to do is allow for date sales, right? Not so much a whole restaurant. So I'm also supportive of adding those as well.
Uh, council, we got both these topics we covered like early on in the conversation, I like asked questions to them and I don't know, we're going back to it, like
I I'm supportive of that.
I know, we like, I like, we we went back to this one, we're going back to this one.
Oh, where are we in support of it? Are we all in consensus of adding it? Okay, if I overlooked it, perfect.
And then Simran, just so, so I guess this would be allowing the farm stand as a CUP in the residential state zone. It sounded like all the other uses that they're recommending were already permitted in the residential state zone, correct?
Uh, that's correct. Uh, the only one that is restaurant as a standalone use is wouldn't be typically allowed in a residential zone, so um I think that's something to consider. Um, but if it's a farm stand which sells shakes or whatever, I think that's day shakes up. That would be a part of the farm stand, I believe.
How else can we identify the restaurant? And we can add that language to it.
Um, the only thing I could think of was like a food establishment associated with the onsite agricultural use. So that way it's like accessory. So that's another way to think about it, but another way to think about is if it's compatible with a farm stand.
What you said.
Um, one other option and cities do that then because this zone would only go into effect when annexation occurs that at the time, um, there can be language added that says all existing uses in the county zone are are considered grandfathered in. Because then you don't allow for that to happen elsewhere in the city.
I think the problem is that they're still going through the draft process. And so I would be just more comfortable just putting that language in there now.
Uh, the language that Simran mentioned or or just the farm stand?
For for what's added, what's been asked for in the Eena.
The restaurant doesn't accessory use to the agricultural production.
I think, Gabriel, you came up with other language.
Yeah, farm stand and then Simran mentioned, uh, yeah, like the uh restaurants associated with agricultural use, which would be the primary use. All right, um, any other further public comments online or in person? Uh, there's no more comments. We're gonna close public hearing at uh ten ten. Um what are the wishes of the city council? Say take a motion.
Can you put up the slide again, the staff recommended?
And I'll go through it one more time. One is to continue the resolution for the general plan amendments. The second is to approve the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment and change of zone. And then the last is direct staff to start working on updating engineering standards. So I might make make a motion to approve these uh recommendation um following the 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 three recommendations you're posing there um with the understanding, uh, I mean, it's it's on record what the council had a consensus on uh in approving and uh the planning commission recommendations we went over um and then specific to the uh annexation of the, you know, what, you know, the the annex there, hopefully one day we are able to annex it, but um, you heard uh the the council consensus on that too. Um, I'll I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, Delia?
Uh, council member Dr. Figueroa?
Hi.
Council member Vitan?
I.
Council member Delgado?
Yes.
And Mayor Potengalarsa?
I.
Motion passes.
All right. Um, now we're gonna move on, I go in my agenda. Uh, very potential, it's nobody to read the title, the record for the city council, the Coachella California, many California municipal codes titled seven clean zoning and the official Coachella don't need that consistency update for implementation of Coachella Plan twenty thirty five. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, public comments, another uh agenda item, the public may address the city council board corporation slash authority on any item of in it of interest to the public that is not in the agenda, but is in the subject matter jurisdiction thereof, please leave me your comments to three minutes. Any comments in person? None, uh, any online? I don't see any. Uh, we're gonna move forward uh to reports and requests. Uh, council member, uh, council member, council comments slash report of miscellaneous committees. Um, sorry, council member Delgado?
Um, I'll try to be as brief as I can. On the Sunline, um on the sunlight transit agency, we approved eight buses, hydrogen fuel, electric buses, buses for eleven million dollars and a hydrogen fueling station for eight point five million, all fully funded by grants. Um, we have a new CEO, Mona Ba- Bauta. Um, we also have a new chairperson of the board, Lisa Middleton from Palm Springs, and I've been appointed the vice chairperson of the board. For Palm Springs Airport, we have, uh, we're updating our uh master plan. And so there's a lot of things going on. Um, they're expanding the baggage claim, we're getting new restaurants there, new shops there. They're also providing additional parking. We just brought in a loose or we just agreed to a lease with the Palm Springs Museum for additional parking. So you'll also see shade structure. There's a lot of renovations coming in. Um, for for SCAG transportation, um, we got a update on the uh emerging emerging technology, good movement approach uh and the California State Rail Plan Update and the Racial Equity Action Plan. A lot of important, sorry. For the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy, um, we are awarded five grants uh for the climate resilience and community access um to the Living Desert SoCal Mountains Foundation, the Native American Land Trust, Desert Compost and the City of Palm Desert. Um, for me, I I attended the uh Aldi um grand opening. Um, it was, you know, it was a big success. We had a lot of people waiting there. Um, so I enjoyed our residents' uh excitement over it. I'm looking forward to the um event that we have tomorrow, tomorrow morning. Um, and that's it, I think.
Council member Dr. Figueroa?
Um, well, I'm gonna start with the mosquito vector control. We need to make sure people are aware. Uh, they have found, um, find my email, um um traces of um sorry, here is my email. Where is it at? Um mosquitoes, what's that virus that's in the mosquito?
Bengay?
No. Um, S L E V um detection in the East Valley. So St. Louis, S S philitis virus positive mosquitoes uh found in the East Valley, specifically in Ossis, but it's also, you know, um, in the East Valley as a whole. So if it's in one region, it's, you know, in the area, so the you know, mosquitoes transmitting. So I think it's important that we're, you know, um, reminding uh residents, if they have still water, throw it away, refill it every day, don't let your dogs um thing of water just sit there because that is a breathing ground for mosquitoes and and watch what you're doing with your plants. So those are important. Um, more information I can um share with the city manager from the PAO from the the um mosquito vector control. Um, I did attend the Coachella Association of Governments General Meeting on Monday, um, and the mayor transitioned out from being the CBAG chair and they honored him um at that event and also um provided some good information and on what's coming in from CBAG and in the sort of the CV link here in Coachella should be coming soon. So that's very exciting um in that area as well as the I did go to the Aldi grant uh grand opening and everyone was getting the thirty nine cent avocados. Um, so that was a good experience and and, you know, I think I'm very excited for that food area because it brings a lot of a healthier options of food to the community, but not just to Coachella, but also the rest of the Eastern Coachella Valley that you know, sometimes it's harder for them to to get access to that type of good quality food uh because it's further reach from their um radius that they're able to attend. Um and um then tended the, since we didn't have meeting two weeks ago, you know, went to senior center subcommittee and also had public safety committee, but I also was able to participate in the Nova High School um graduation, high school graduation here from Coachella and as well as Imagine Schools, a middle school promotion. Um, and that was a fun um time and um looking forward to tomorrow's um dollar. I I hear it's a double oh seven theme, so make sure you
James.
James Bond.
That was a fun answer, uh, councilor.
Um, let's see. I'm attending uh the SCAG uh Energy and Sustainability, I think, committee subcommittee next week on Thursday, so that's pretty exciting. Going to LA for that, um I went to the Aldi uh grand opening. It was really great to see a lot of the community there throughout the day. Um, I went to Starbucks around, I think, six or seven P M. And there were still, the parking lot was completely packed. So it was really nice to see the community very interested in, okay, let me go check out this new store and 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 see what what options um they have. So that's really great. Uh, tomorrow's the dinner for the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, their installation. Excited to be there um on behalf of the city and I think with other city staff and council members. So that'll be really great. Um, fun opportunity for us. And um, let's see, what else? I think those are all my comments for tonight. I'm I'm sleepy, but thank you, staff, uh for for being here with us and you all have families, you all have, you know, dinner plans, wanting to go, you know, maybe catch some dinner. So thank you so much for being here and um you know, for always answering our questions and and I know it's part of your work, but nonetheless, you're here with a smiling, a smile and you're here, you know, indulging us. So I I really appreciate that. Your your hard work and um you being here does not go unnoticed. It's, you know, we're really happy and I I just say appreciate you guys a lot. So, thank you.
Awesome. Uh, yeah, thanks. Uh, you know, I'm just pointing myself, the first time I'm running a meeting and it, we're going past ten. Uh, but but it was a big meeting because we did cancel the last one and so it's not a lot of my fault. Um I uh, uh, yes, it's, you know, just reporting on on meetings, I I I was in both those meetings with council member Figueroa on the public safety committee meeting here and uh also the senior advisor committee, both were uh very uh interesting and that there're gonna be more items here for port, um, um, seniors are, you know, seeing, you know, our our involvement and uh, you know, obviously they they they're welcome, they're welcome us to go. Uh, I wanna make sure extend the the invite to go sing karaoke and dance with them. Um, they enjoy it and I know we're gonna be having a a new uh uh sort of a audio for them, right? And all that stuff, it's on on the way. And so um, is it there already?
Stalling it.
Nice. That that's been like the number one ask, it it, you know, and so uh, once it's installed, we'll go party with them. Uh, and so we're we're excited, the public safety committee, uh, we're gonna have back the uh item regarding the um, licensed plate reader came back about a years or or two ago, coming back um uh for 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 council to further discuss um and debate uh the topic. Um, uh, we, you know, it's great joining all of you at the uh groundbreaking for the triple E apartments. Um, you know, housing and uh development, affordable housing is a pillar to community to ensure that um our residents and our future residents have a uh affordable, safe and a nice place to live. And and uh, I'm 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 proud of working with you all uh in the council and with you all and the staff and our partners and making that happen. Uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, I'm I'm also was appointing on the uh sister city uh uh committee by the mayor when we did the appointments. And so one of the first things I wanted to do is we talked to our nearest sister city and that's Mexicali. Um, and so I had a fortune fortunate, I met with the uh Mexicali mayor um in Calixco about a month ago or a little over a month ago. And then I had asked her if I could invite the mayor and she could welcome us with her team. And so I invited the mayor and the city manager uh and a few other folks to go meet with them and to discuss certain ideas on how we can um revamp that sister city agreement that was signed in two thousand and fifteen. Part of the uh things that happen with sister cities is a lot of times they're signed and they're celebrated and nothing happens. And uh, we have in the past, so not not that nothing has happened because I know that um, we have donated uh the our fire truck, our past fire truck to them in the past. And that's something beautiful and they remembered that. Um, um, in Mexicali, the in Mexico, the the they they're very against term limits. I mean, I mean, very pro term limits. So be before the mayors only had one term, one term. Now they're able to have uh uh two terms. And so uh that'll help with our relationship with them because uh since they were having switching government every three years, uh then we weren't, then our relationships were then with with the with the leadership there was falling apart. Uh, but now that then government, government Mexico is changing and they're allowing for uh reelections and for the government, it's gonna continue, then I think it's gonna allow us to, you know, for the next few years to foster relationship. Mexicali is important one because of the the closeness to our community. A lot of our families go to Mexicali for uh the medical tourism, for uh the gastronomy, for uh, you know, entertainment, the Fiestas del Sol. Uh, and we have a lot more uh after that meeting that we had a Zoom meeting with uh more of our our cabinet members. And one of the things that was discussed and we're gonna be invited, I I did say, you know, I wanna make sure that a lot of our council gets invited to them too. Uh, and they're gonna invite us to be tabling at their Fiestas del Sol uh this year and Selena is gonna be working on that relationship with them. And so so ensuring that, you know, we can invite our residents to go out there. Uh, not only is it gonna be a one way sip, but but a two way relationship. Uh, and in the future, after we do this mural, then we have one of our artists uh go out and do a mural uh for them in Mexicali. Um, and so um, there's more to come. I'm already so and also met with them about the idea of working on having a a a music or arts festival and a gastronomy festival. I'm already so and also met with them about the idea of working on having a a a music or arts festival and a gastronomy festival of about Mexicali. And in Coach- in Coachella, so that they could bring some of their their good food, their artisan beer into Coachella and. And talk and part of what their tourist eh tourism uh agency, and so look forward to the, you know, Fiestas del Sol and other uh items where. They can invite the entire council to go out and visit and our residents um to learn more about. Uh the richness of our na- our sister city and likewise for us to welcome more uh folks from Mexicali into Coachella. Uh with that, that concludes my um uh my comments and I'll pass it on to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, uh just one few little items, uh we don't forget, we have our Fourth of July event, uh Saturday, July first at six P M. Then we have our Bagduma ribbon cutting uh for the basketball courts, the pickleball courts and the volleyball tennis courts on uh July fourteenth at seven thirty. Uh P M, I wanted to go over the the summer schedule for for the council, we our next meeting will be July twenty-sixth. We go dark in August traditionally, and I will be canceling the meeting on September twenty-seventh due to the legal city co- uh conference. There's a son, Lee Lauren, an article on us, uh number two, uh thank you for approving item number thirty-six. Uh a councilman, he hands words, uh you do have the best executive team and director in the Coachella, directors in the Coachella Valley. I'm very proud of them and I'm very grateful for all their hard work and dedication, so thank you very much. And then also a speedy recovery to our planning commissioner chair, Mr. Ruben Gonzalez.
Um that concludes our council comments or council city manager meetings and it is ten twenty-six, meeting in progress.